Good evening and welcome to the night school committee meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please everybody remain standing for a moment. And as you join us on a moment of silence, this past Tuesday was the first anniversary of the horrific criminal act carried in Boston at the Boston Marathon bombings. So I ask that you keep all the families and certainly the victims in your thoughts and prayers and just a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, folks. Okay. Mr. Senator.
Yes, I have a couple of notes on the minutes.
Okay, let's get a motion and then a second and we'll discuss.
Motion approved, Senator.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made a second, okay, Alex, go ahead.
There is an Alec Pratt reference, I believe it's line 86.
That guy owes me money.
It's not this guy.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So if I could just change Alec to Alex.
Kelly, I gave you some, right, sentence.
They're out of each other.
Yes, good. All right. So you gave the line. Alex fixed.
Got it.
That's all I found.
Anything else, folks?
Did you want to change the order of the agenda, just to match the...
You always want to take your Senate agendas, that's right. Is that the agenda?
Yeah. All right. Go ahead.
All right. Anything else, guys? Right. Motion made a second, we've got the fix on line 86, so get Alex to the end, correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both unanimous. Folks, we've got a special treat tonight. First off, thanks for all being here tonight. And we've got seventh and eighth graders, they just had their science fair this past week. I'm going to tell you, the science itself was wonderful. What was truly amazing also was the presentation skills, the ability to articulate, the vocabulary, everything was just wonderful. And you're going to get to see a sampling of that this evening with the kids here going. Now, this, we just have to be National Environmental Education Week, and the theme this year is STEM, the Greening of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. So you're going to see this is going to fit in just a little bit, maybe somewhat coincidentally, but then somewhat deliberately too, because the teachers do ensure that the curriculum is aligned to what's going on in the real world also. So they get much more than the three Rs that we did when we were youngsters, some of us sitting here at the table, maybe some in the audience too. But, okay, Kelly, take it away, please.
Sure. I'd also like to welcome a number of our middle school students here this evening. It was a terrific science fair that we were witness to the other day. And we're going to start off this evening with a science project called Hockey Shot, and Dan, Sean, and Justin are going to be presenting that for us.
This is our project, Hockey Shot. It's about a, we're doing what type of hockey stick shoots that are more accurate, a wooden stick or a hardened stick. And our hypothesis was that a wooden stick would shoot more accurate, because a composite stick can bend and get flex, you can see in this picture. And flex gives the stick more power in the shot, and that can take away from this accuracy of the shot.
And our hypothesis is right, that the wooden stick would be more accurate, because it has less flex. In this graph here, it shows the wooden stick have double shots made out of the composite And this graph shows that the wooden, and, that both wooden righty and lefty stick were, or some of the higher results in all corners. We had four corners and each, with each stick, we took 10 shots in each corner, with a total of 40 shots with each stick. So, in these pictures, you can see this is how much a wooden stick can flex, and it flexes a lot less than a composite stick can. And here is all the materials that we used. And, so, yeah, is there any questions?
Yes?
How many people did you have in your experiment?
Just those three.
Oh, how many people did you have do the...
Me and Sean, we shot. He's a righty and lefty, so it worked out.
All right. Okay. Oops.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys. We're all happy. Our project.
Especially for Superintendent Clancy, hockey is his favorite sport.
Actually, sorry, I just thought of something. Do you guys play hockey, youth hockey?
Yeah, we all...
Do you guys play with wooden sticks or composite sticks?
We all play with composite sticks, because when you're taking a shot on like a goalie, you don't have to put it in like a specific spot, you just have to...
So you'd rather trade some accuracy for more power?
Yeah.
Well, in the younger leagues, the kids don't have as much power in their shot, and having more accuracy would definitely benefit them.
Okay. Interesting.
Good points.
Thank you.
Excellent. So our next project this evening is titled The Air You Breathe, and Hayden's going to be presenting that project.
So my project is titled The Air You Breathe. It's on air pollution inside of houses. Air pollution is defined as the contamination of the air by smoke, particles, and other harmful gases. My hypothesis was that in the home, the basement would have the most air pollution because of furnaces and other heating systems that can release particles and gases into the air. So to test this, I took microscope slides and put petroleum jelly onto them, petroleum jelly because it can, the dust can cling onto it and stay there for observation later on. I put one slide in six rooms in three different houses, and left them to sit for two days, and then after the two-day period, I looked at them underneath the microscope, and in one microscope view, under low power, counted how many particles I could see. The data did not support the hypothesis. The basement only had the third-most particles out of all of the rooms. The rooms were the TV room, a kitchen, the basement, a bathroom, a master bedroom, and the children's bedroom. The bathroom and the master bedroom had the most out of all of the rooms. The basement had the third-most, as I said before. Overall, the data was very similar. It was actually almost inconclusive. So if I were to redo this, I would do it outside, but because it was during the winter, it would have been kind of hard to do that. I would have done it in different parts around the houses, around a house in their lawn or something. So, does anybody have any questions?
Well, the room window on half the most...
The bathroom and the master bedroom.
That's because the microscope slide can't pick up the mess that was in the kids' bed. Behave, Chuck. I hope my kids are listening.
Did any of the houses have pets?
Yes, my, I did, I used my house, my neighbor's house, and my grandparents' house. We have six people and a lot of pets. My neighbor's house has five people and one pet, and my grandparents' house is two people and no pets. So, overall, our house had the most.
Be careful how much farther you go, or you might...
Yeah.
Watch it. Specifically, make sure you don't mention it's ours.
Our next project this evening, The Balancing Act, and Julia, Cora, and Hannah will be presenting this.
For our project, we did the balancing act. We tested...
We tested the significance of your surroundings while you're balancing on one foot.
We placed our 25 human subjects in front of three walls, the blank wall, the cluttered wall, and the moving object wall. The moving object wall consisted of a fan in front of the blank wall.
We decided to do this project because we wanted to see how well you would balance, which, like, your surroundings would help you balance the best.
This project was appealing to me, because I'm a gymnast, and knowing how to balance on, balance correctly would be helpful to stay on the beam.
The hypothesis for our project was that while bouncing on the dominant foot, the cluttered wall would be the help, the most helpful to balance on, because your eyes can focus on what you're trying to do.
And during a review of literature, which was like our research project, we learned that balance is a lot more complicated than just like focus, because you have to use your eyes to see where you are, and your limbs to like feel your surroundings, and that your inner ear, called the equilibrium, has balance receptors in it. And we, our hypothesis was not supported by our data, because actually, the moving wall had the most, had, people had the most amount of time on that, and then the blank wall had the second most, and the cluttered wall had the least, actually.
If we were to redo this project, we would elaborate the moving wall. Instead of just using a fan, we would make it so that you can see the movement more, so it would affect our results and make it more accurate.
For this project, we tested sixth and seventh graders, and we have one discrepancy, because our subject six did not complete their testing, so they were eliminated from the data. If then, overall, we wanted to learn more about how the body balances.
Overall, we learned that science for projects are overwhelming, but we had fun. We had fun collecting our 25 human subjects and putting this together.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Which one was the best wall for failings again?
It was the moving wall, but we thought that was because you couldn't really see the fan actually moving. I mean, it was going too fast, and we had like ribbon tied around it, but you couldn't really see it moving, so we would change that, if we would do it again.
Yes, well done. Thank you.
And our next project this evening is Candy Versus Medicine, and Emily and Rachel will be presenting.
Policy subcommittee, take note.
Exactly.
So our title was Candy Versus Medicine, and our testable question, which was based off of our whole project, was can children between the ages of five to seven tell the difference between candy and medicine? And our hypothesis was based on some of knowledge, some of our knowledge from taking medicines and seeing that they did look like candies, and finding a website called pillverscandy.org, which would show you to, like, a medicine and a candy, and you would click on which one was the medicine or the candy. So based on gathered research, we figured out that, well, our hypothesis was that 60% of the tested students would be able to tell the difference and identify the samples correctly, but the other 40% would guess wrong simply because of their young age or their lack of knowledge between the similarities and differences. And the materials for this project were mostly, were mostly candies and medicines, and we used a Starburst and then a galt, adult gummy vitamin, a Tootsie Roll and a Viactive, and then we used a Gumball and a Centrum multivitamin. We used a mini M&amp;M and an Ibuprofen tablet, also an Orbit mint gum versus a nicotine gum, and Tic Tacs versus an Ibuprofen PM. And then we also needed about 10 to 20 students, and we needed their permission slips back in order for them to take the test, and we also needed a data chart.
So while doing this whole experiment, we followed a procedure, and the first thing we had to do was actually make a permission slip to pass out to the kindergarten students, and a data table to help organize our data during and after the experiment. The second thing we had to do was we had to email the Shaker Lane School principal, Mr. Farady, and the kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Bell, to make sure that it was okay that we actually conducted the experiment during school hours. And then after the experiment was approved, we passed out the permission slips to the kindergarten class, and then we purchased the medicines and candies that we used in this experiment on this little board. And then we collected the permission slips back. We gave the kindergarten students a two-week time period to pass back the permission slips, and we got 15 students that were allowed to participate in the experiment. And then we prepared the medicines and candies in containers, and we hot glued the medicines and candies to the bottom of the containers, and then we hot glued the lid on top of the container, because the medicines and candies were not allowed to be exposed to the kindergarten students, just for safety reasons. And we had to bring the students in the hallway one by one, once we were like testing them, and we asked them for each comparison, which they thought was the medicine, and they pointed to which one they thought was the medication. And then as we were doing the experiment, we recorded our results on a data table, and after we collected all of our data, we made six pie charts based off of six different pie charts for each of the individual comparisons. And this pie chart here shows the results for comparison one, which was that 27% of the 15 answers were correct for comparison one, and the other 73% of the answers were incorrect. And those exact results go for comparison four as well, which was the mini Ibuprofen versus the mini M&amp;M. And comparison two was the Tootsie Roll versus the Viactive Calcium Plus, and there was 47% correct answers and 53% incorrect answers. And comparison three was the Gumball versus the Centrum multivitamin. There was 53% correct answers versus 47% incorrect answers. And comparison three was the only comparison where we got more correct answers than incorrect answers. And comparison five and comparison six also had the exact same results. We had 40% correct answers and 60% incorrect answers. And the bar graph up here shows the average of correct and incorrect answers, which was 3.1 incorrect answers and 2.9 correct answers. And overall, kindergarten students, children of ages five to seven, cannot tell the difference between medicine and candy, and we felt as if this experiment would benefit parents with young children, just to allow them to be more aware of this type of situation, be more cautious with medicine around young children. Any questions?
Excellent. Have you thought about taking the results to the marketing department of the drug companies to see what they've done? He gets an interesting response. Mike thinks it's a shock type. He's trying to do a licensing deal, he's giving away... It's curious to see what they'd be like, "Oh, yeah, that wasn't what we meant to do."
Of course it was. Maybe they should design candies to look more like medicine.
Oh, ladies, thank you very much. And thank you so much for coming out on a Thursday night. I know how busy you are, and you truly made our meeting this evening. Not that I don't enjoy spending time with the school committee, but it's really nice to have students here, and enjoy your break, and thanks again. Your experiments were wonderful. Very proud of what you've done. So, thank you.
He's trying to tell you, you're welcome this way. I just have to take my medicine.
All right, we do want to thank you all. Appreciate it. You were excellent. And for those others in the audience that aren't parents, or, you know, media friends and family of the students, you can see what some of your tax dollars are going for. It's not just buildings. This is wonderful. These are the ones where the school committee meetings are fun. Thank you all. Gentlemen, I'd like to do, the way we've got the agenda, I'd like to have interested citizens first, before we do the appointment. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
So, folks, just a little flip-flop on the agenda, rather than doing the appointment and then doing the citizens' input, let's have citizens' input first. And so, we'd like to do, anybody that would like to speak, you know, please come on up to the mic, I think most of you know the drill, but come on up to the mic, identify yourself, and say what you'd like to say, please. So, interested citizens. Yes, ma'am.
The school committee has already received this letter, but I wanted to make sure that interested citizens also heard it. This is Dear School Committee Members. Wait just a moment. I'm one of the many Littleton citizens who have watched Brian Tarbox as he works in the Finance Committee as representative from the school committee. He's always in attendance, is conversant with the various agenda items, always adds to discussions, often makes helpful clarifications, and often proposes his own motions and further thoughts on the topics in discussion. Mr. Tarbox is even-handed and considers the many sides of each issue. I attended the Finance Committee meeting on March 11th, and was both shocked and dismayed to learn that Mr. Tarbox might not be reappointed to the Finance Committee by the school committee. The Finance Committee could find no reason not to reappoint Mr. Tarbox, and Mr. Tarbox himself would welcome reappointment. Perhaps there has been a misunderstanding about the intentions of the school committee? Perhaps Mr. Tarbox's independence of mind and clear understanding of the town and its financial issues are not fully appreciated by the school committee? However, given the high caliber of Mr. Tarbox's representation for the school committee, I ask that you, the school committee, reappoint him to the Finance Committee and keep him in that position for as long as possible. He is a great asset to your committee and to this town. Thank you.
Just for the record, please, give a name and address, please.
Vera Spoor, 546 Newtown Road.
Thanks much. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is Henry Crystal, 18 Mill Lane in Littleton. And I've only become aware of this situation the last few hours, and I'm going to speak I've been in town for 50 years, and I've seen our schools go through a cycle. They started, they went up, they seem to be drifting right now. And I, I have worked with Mr. Tarbox on the voter participation committee, and that's been, I think, for over a year. And I find he brings really thoughtful, well-organized, energetic ideas to the table. He's a man who's very interested in our government in Littleton and how we do things, and I've benefited immensely. I find he's a man who thinks, works, and tells it like it is. And I sort of like that, that's important to me. And when I realized, and I hadn't, had never been to the school committee meeting, and I apologize for that tonight, was this was interesting to see the young people doing things, it's very good. But anyway, I'm not here, I'm not familiar with how you people address issues, but I think you're interested in education. Education is the goal here. And I look upon Mr. Tarbox as a man with financial background and very much involved in education. There's another man, and I don't know the other man, but I do see he worked in New York for 12 years, and a very important job, very important construction job. But this is not Bronx, New York. And we don't... And we don't, our construction days, I think, are over here in Littleton. We have built schools. Construction is nothing, that's not what we need. What we need is education. So I think that this committee should really consider the educational qualifications of their rep. And I'd like them not to take them away from the FinCom because I like what I see them doing. And I think it's something the School Committee does for the town, I guess, because I don't realize how this even happens until I became interested in this, and I say, "Wow, we got Mr. Tarbox on the Finance Committee because of the School Committee." That's wonderful. So, thank you for that. And I'll sit down.
My name is Tom Coughlin. I live on Coughlin Road. And I've known Mr. Tarbox for many years, and I believe he's a real asset to the town and to the Finance Committee. I've seen him in action. I know that he can think on his feet. I know that he has, he'll express his opinions. And I urge you folks to vote for Mr. Tarbox tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and gentlemen and ladies. My name is Richard Crowley. I'm resident in Littleton, 359 King Street. And I'm on the Building Committee along with Steve Moore. And I'm here to voice my support for Steve Moore. I've known him for a number of years. He's lived in Littleton here, made Littleton his home for a number of years. His dedication to the town and to helping make this town a better place is unparalleled. His abilities to manage budgets are just amazing. In fact, he's managing one right now that's over a billion dollars. So if you put your trust in a good financial person who can manage the schools and the town's budget, I would highly recommend Steve Moore. I know him personally. He's of the highest quality individual, highest character, and he's generally a good man who will make great decisions for the town and for the School Department. So I would hope that you consider his application. Thank you.
Jen Stack, 40, Buckley Road. And I'm the parent of two students at Shaker Lane School. I'm here tonight to endorse the reappointment of Mr. Tarbox as the School Committee's representative to FinCom. I think that his service speaks for itself. I don't think we need to go into the experience that he has, the duration of time that he's given to this town, his knowledge of what goes on in this town fiscally, his ability to find point issues, and his ability to get right to the core of what's really important to be discussed. The question that I would put to the School Committee tonight, as you engage in your interviews and conversations about your appointments, is to elucidate for the people, for the voters and the taxpayers, what criterion you're using for making this decision. It seems like we have a pretty good candidate, a person who's already been serving. And I would guess, I would ask you all to elucidate what criterion you're hoping to meet in a person who is not already serving in this position, so that we can have a full understanding of the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Simone, 93 Woodcombe Avenue. I have submitted a letter to the Committee with respect to Mr. Tarbox. Won't repeat some of the things that have been said and agree entirely with those comments, particularly as far as Mr. Tarbox's work ethic and commitment to the subject matter and to the excellence of our schools, as well as the broader financial health of the community. And I'd like to just focus on that just for a couple moments. During Mr. Tarbox's tenure, the policies which led us to our current AAA bond rating were put into place on the FinCom. Other policies and procedures were implemented as well. The all-boards meeting, which has accomplished something which is a model for our governance moving forward as far as collaboration amongst the boards, communication, open, transparent process, that leads to what many, I think, agree, has been some of the smoother, more effective processes of, you know, the last few years by which the boards have prioritized and found, and reached some conclusions. Those policies, those procedures are shown to be effective. We've got a AAA bond rating, which is coveted. It draws benefit to the community with respect to the cost to us to borrow funds. Finally, it has also come to my attention that the turnover of the School Committee appointees on the FinCom actually eclipses by some magnitude those appointees from other boards and committees, putting the School Committee at a disadvantage, given the obvious subject matter expertise that's required. Having sat through the recent budget process for the School Committee, I appreciate and respect the complexity with which you work and manage. Brian's obviously well-versed with that. I would not want to see the School Committee or town disadvantaged by further unnecessary turnover. And finally, Ms. Stack asked a question, which I too wanted to ask, which is to better understand, not just with respect to this process this evening, but in general, the criteria that you use, have used and plan to use moving forward to make decisions of this nature. How do you evaluate the fitness of a candidate, of a sitting committee member? To what degree have you given feedback to this gentleman with respect to his performance, be that positive or negative? That process, the consistency of it and the transparency around it is critically important, and I'd ask you to reflect on that and share some details with us this evening. Thank you very much.
What we'd like to do now, folks, is we'll have each of the candidates come forward, have an opportunity to speak to us as to the desire and the qualifications they feel they have to sit. And then we'll ask some questions, and then we'll go about that process. Brian, you're the incumbent. I invite you up first, please.
Always taking a chance when you have your notes on a tablet. So, my name's Brian Tarbox, 16 Fletcher Lane, lived in Littleton twenty-ish years. My day job is as a software engineer at a financial services company downtown Boston. As a software engineer, I hold multiple patents, and I've won industry awards for innovation. In 2010, a software project mine won Oracle's Duke's Choice Award for the most innovative use of software technology that whole year. The financial services company I work at is called Cabot Research. We're a small, actually now we just got to seven people, but we're shooting to be a billion-dollar company. But it's a startup, so I can't tell you what we do. But it's large fund management in the Amazon cloud, which is an exciting space to be. So, I wanted, I was thinking about what was, what would be the criterion to appoint or not appoint. And so I wanted to go over what I thought the criterion might be and how I stacked up on the various issues. And so I'd say, the criterion I'm looking at is, in the last two years, the budget has been ready, has been essentially done months before it has ever been done historically before then, which shows some degree of consensus. I think last year's town meeting, Article Four, we set a record for the fastest approval of the budget. There's been times when Article Four has gone to 10:30 or at night, and last year it was sort of over in a heartbeat. So again, I think that speaks to consensus. In my time on FinCom, I've been a leader in pushing for metric-based budgeting, policy-based budgeting, and transparency in budgeting. And although I've only been one member of the finance team, and this is one thing we take very seriously, is it's a finance team, our bond rating has been raised twice. This last time, it was raised two notches to AAA. We have the highest bond rating of any town in the state. You can't get better than that. That, the last time it was raised before this, it allowed us to refinance our capital debt on the middle school, saving us about a million dollars a year. Now, as you recall, that set off a little bit of a feeding frenzy because everyone said, "Wow, a million dollars that you got by having a policy." And we turned around and said, "And we have a policy for what you have to do with the money that's saved by getting an increased bond rating because of a policy." And we turn it back into paying down debt sooner, which itself frees up more money for the budget. So, policy-driven approach, it's not just good, it saves the town money. It has saved us a million dollars. Some of that money certainly becomes more available to the school. I'll say that besides the fine folks that are here, I have the endorsement of almost every member of the finance team is on record as supporting. But I also want to talk about basically times when I think I've had your back, in that, you know, I may not come here to your meetings as often as perhaps I should, and conversely, you know, there's a lot of meetings where you guys can't come to our meetings. We're all busy. But over the last couple of years, at the Finance Committee, there was a consistent sense that the, that was expressed by other members of the committee, that the staff reductions that happened two years ago didn't actually happen. Every time the reductions were brought up, members of our team said, "But it wasn't real. No one really got cut. No one really got laid off." And I'm here to tell you, I'm the only one who said, "Yes, they did." In part because one of my friends got laid off. So, for about fourteen months, maybe more, I was trying to lead your case with the rest of my committee that there actually had been cuts. Finally, at a selectmen's meeting, Stephen Udi gave an incredibly detailed presentation, whereupon the rest of my committee finally said, "Gee, Brian, I guess you're right. I guess there actually have been cuts." So, I'll say that. I'll say the second thing is, we recently had a debate about the funding of the fire station. And there was a lot of back and forth about that. And the consensus of many members of the finance team was that the initially proposed plan to do the fire station inside the operational budget would have starved all departments, including your Department of Capital, for about twenty years. I was the one who put it on the agenda, and I was the one who made the motion that the FinCom go on record as saying that that funding plan was not appropriate. The result of that is that you, that the schools and other departments are not going to be starved for capital projects for the next ten to fifteen years. So, my point in all this is, you may not be aware of it, but I've had your back. I also serve as the FinCom's representative to the Voter Participation Committee. I'm actually not sure if you don't reappoint me, if that means I have to jump off that committee or whether they have an opening. We'll handle that. But I think the Voter Participation Committee is another very useful thing to increase our citizens' confidence in the whole system. And the last thing I want to say, I think Mr. Simone mentioned it, is, over the last seven years, the turnover of appointees from this committee has been more than the turnover from all the other appointing bodies put together, which has left the FinCom appointees in general being the least experienced junior members of the team. Finance is, I mean, school finance, town finance is a complex business. I'm sure you'll be able to hit me with stumper questions if you so choose. But it takes some time to get up to speed with that. And I think consistently having the junior members of the finance team be the School Committee appointees, I don't think it helps this committee. The chairman of the FinCom hasn't been one of the School Committee's representatives for at least the last six or seven years. Tired of you guys, if you're okay with that. I don't know that it serves anyone. So, based on all that, on the metrics that I see as the important ones, I feel like I've scored the highest you can. You can't get a higher bond rating. You couldn't have approved Article Four any sooner. Maybe we could have the budget done sooner than this year and last year, but it's a pretty close thing. And the last thing I'll say is just the collegiality. We had, we've had people come into our meetings and say, "Wow, you guys come in and are respectful to each other and leave your egos at the door and just do the town business." And, I mean, we're all volunteers, we all do our thing. But the Finance Committee, as part of the finance team, has managed to find a way to get along and do this business. It can be dry, but it can be pretty exciting. I mean, it's sort of dry numbers, but in the end, it's real, live stuff. So, anyway, so I think based on the criterion that seems to strike me as the interesting ones, I think I do pretty well. But it's up to you guys and ladies.
Thanks, man. Questions?
You want to start? I have, like, three questions here. If you humor me for a couple minutes.
Sure, of course.
Humor the whole board, actually. So...
At your disposal.
So, am I not really going to focus on the particulars of the thing here, but I'd like to just get your opinions on? So, the first one is about style. Could you discuss an initiative where you had the minority opinion and how you worked with the committee and led your opinion, your topic through the committee?
Sure. Well, one of the things that you may notice with, if you, if you look at our minutes or our meetings, is that we tend to achieve consensus. I mean, some of the boards end up with a lot of three to two votes. We generally talk and talk and talk until we've convinced ourselves. So, I mean, one item, well, let's see, there's a couple of things. I mean, one was the fire station, where we were talking about the project, we were talking about the project, and a number of people actually wrote to some of us and said, "You're the Finance Committee. Take a stand." So I put it on the agenda that we should take a stand. And at first, the committee was thinking, "Well, we're weighing issues about voter participation, you know, should a million-dollar, multimillion-dollar item be done by town meeting or should it be done by voters?" And basically, I pressed and said, "We're the Finance Committee. We need to take a stand." And people, you know, came around to my point of view. Now, on the other hand, there's been times when I've had the minority point of view, and they've talked me, you know, out of my position. I mean, I'll tell you right now, the, for the current budget is in, and you can stop at any point, but I'll just keep going, but current budget is in deficit of ninety-eight thousand dollars and change. And I noticed that our, we have a request for a hundred thousand dollars to start the master plan. And as part of the master plan, way back when, when this was not a building, and, you know, I said, "Okay, how far along has that process gone?" You know, because at a certain level, you know, we know a hundred thousand dollars isn't going to be enough for the master plan. We're in deficit of about a hundred thousand dollars. You know, convince me that that isn't just an easy win. And we talked, and we talked, and we said, "Let's get some more data. Let's get some more data about how much the master plan is going to cost and where we stand and where the process is." I will say, I'm still, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-eight thousand dollars deficit, but in the end, I was convinced that it was the right thing for the long-term view, because we'd get the benefits of the master plan. So, you know, I was going to say, you know, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but we don't look at it that way. I mean, we achieve consensus. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but...
That's what I was just looking for. I wanted to hear your approach on the problems or the issues. So, my next one here. Recently, the School Committee worked with the town in using our circuit breaker funds to lower the requested amount of appropriation. This has helped the town balancing this year's budget, or at least bringing it down from two hundred thousand to ninety-five thousand and change there. What's your opinion of this approach? And then I'll tie into my next question about the long-term future of the town budget.
Okay, sure. Well, this is a tricky year because, I mean, there's... Well, this is, this is a tricky year, because, I mean, there's, I mean, as you all well know, some citizens may not be quite as, quite as aware, I mean, there's two, two changes that had countervailing effects, but came out at the same time. The, the one was for the assessing in arrears, you know, prospectively, or retrospectively, for some of, some of the case funding. And the other was the changed interpretation of how much money could be carried over in, in the choice accounts. And so, one tended to drive costs up, one tended to, the other one, basically seemed to be a legal requirement that spending, spending had, had to go up. So, I mean, those are two unusual, usual events, but, I mean, we tend to have unusual events all the time. I mean, the bottom line is, I think, I mean, I try to take a, sort of a, more of a macro view of it, is, things happen, every year, there are, there are changes, you got it, there has to be revolving funds, there has to be, there basically has to be some float in the budget. Given all, given all the stresses, I think, I think we approached it well. I mean, your committee sent representatives to the Finance, the Finance Team, you know, particularly Bonnie. There was give and take, there was understanding of the evolving nature of the state's requirement for spending the additional funds, even though it had been a rule that hadn't been enforced, and so we're going along with, with what seemed to be a status quo condition, and then it changed. So, it seemed like we did, I think we did pretty well. I mean, I think the conclusion that we had from the private meetings and also our various joint meetings was, this was the best we could come up with. It still leaves, you know, if memory serves, about a million dollars in, in reserve float for emergencies, while still meeting the state's requirements. There's back and forth about whether the state's late payment from last year would be repeated this year, but Bonnie got assurances this year that would be able to predate it or postdate it, so we wouldn't get into the same, same problem again. So, I think, given the, given that whole milieu of changes, I think we did pretty You know, I mean, I mean, I mean, it's funny, I mean, I grew, I grew up with education, my mom was a dean at Tufts. You know, I would always like to see, you know, more money.
So, let me just flow this into the next question then, because it's related. So, what recommendations do you see the FinCom making to the Board of Selectmen regarding the long-term budget? Because we often hear something referred to as the structural deficit that's in our, in the overall town budget. So, obviously, the budget is finally approved by the Selectmen and the voters, but the FinCom has the roles in, in terms of recommendations to the, to the, to the Board of Selectmen on the budget. So, what type of recommendations do you see the, needing to be made relative to what's been referred to as a structural deficit?
Okay, sure, sure. And, and, and just, just for a couple of clarities, Selectmen set, set priorities, they're the executive board. Article IV, the budget, is presented by, by FinCom. A few years back, we had, we came close to the precipice of FinCom and Selectmen not being willing to agree to a budget, and then there's whole discussion of, well, then what budget, what Article IV did we print, did we print two? But we managed to not walk over, over that chasm. And the structural deficit, just for the audience, is basically the notion that our, our expenses rise at a slightly higher rate, you know, 3% and change, rise at a slightly higher rate than our, our income rises. And so, structurally, it gets, it gets more and more out of balance. So, that's, I mean, that's the, that's the structural deficit. And so, you basically, you know, either, you know, I mean, at a certain level, it becomes simple, you either, you know, cut your expenses, which is, which is painful, or you, you know, increase your funding source. Now, one of the, one of the things that FinCom has done in, in this process is because of our policy-driven initiatives, we've lowered our cost of borrowing. So, we saved a million dollars. You know, it's like, at a certain level, you know, we like to be sort of a calm, conservative, but I don't see anyone else saving a million dollars a year, you know? It's like, that's a, that's a significant step. But in, in terms of recommendations, one of the things we've tried to do is make the true cost, we all know that the, the driving cost of any town budget is employees. I mean, that's, that's our biggest cost. And one of the things we've tried to do is make the true cost of employees more clear, in that we've, basically, there's the, the salary cost for employee, but then there's all the, the benefit costs. And we've tried to make those benefit costs more apparent, so that we can see what's actually going on. Another thing we've tried to do is, as the FinCom has tried to become more involved in contractual negotiations, you know, as, every time, every time we negotiate a contract, you know, if we, if we give extra benefits, or, you know, extra raises, well deserved, though they may be, let's be very clear about that, there's a cost. And so, basically, we've tried to, we've tried to say, let us be involved, so we can at least model what those costs are, so that we're not surprised. I think, I think, so there's that. I think the master plan, and I've come around on this, was my original position, because I saw the first master plan, or the last master plan, I haven't been in town that long, I suppose there may have been once before, before that. But the master, part of the goal of the master plan is to drive, you know, increased town revenues. Now, the assessor Milgren, who's left a few years back, gave a very interesting presentation to, to the FinCom on ways to drive increased revenues in town. He talked about the ideal of a, essentially, a triple-decker in your downtown, where you wanted your ground floor retail, your second floor light and, light industrial, and your third floor apartments. That's where you got the most tax revenue, that's where you got the big, biggest bang for the buck. So, you know, hopefully, the master plan will, you know, address that, because just building more houses, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, the, the state says, you know, when you build a new house, you get about a dollar twenty-five in costs for every dollar in extra tax revenue you get, you bring in. So, I could keep going, but that's where...
No, that's great. No, thank, thank you very much.
Sure. So, you spoke a lot about the importance of not having so much turnover, and about your experience on the FinCom, and that, and that helping not just the School Committee, but also the town. Could you speak more about your experience and how it, how it serves as a benefit?
Well, I mean, here's the thing, the, hopefully, I mean, FinCom is a, is a seven-headed beast, and sort of the, the beauty and the craziness of the Finance Committee is that seven, seven people appointed by a whole bunch of different boards, and the notion is to bring different, lots of different perspectives. And it, it's interesting in that we sometimes talk about ourselves as the representatives from a various board, but strictly speaking, we're really the appointees. So, like, the moderator appoints one person, but that person doesn't just deal with moderator issues, because there aren't that many, he's got a budget of $25,000, and I don't know if he's ever spent it. So, I mean, part of the thing is that we know each other, we know each other's styles, you know, I know if there's a veterans issue, you know, Alan is going to be interested in it, I know if there's, they know if there's anything to do with transparency, I'm going to jump up and down about it. There's also just the notion of having gone through, having gone through the cycle a few times. I mean, we've, I mean, what are we now, we're April, I know it feels like February, but, you know, we're, we've got a bit of a deficit now, but there's been years, and you get this once you've been doing it for long enough, there's been years when we've had this kind of deficit at quarter of seven on Monday night of town meeting. So, I mean, there's been, you know, there's, there's been improvements there. So, I mean, I think it's, it's in part just having, having seen what happens when you make decisions, having seen what happens when you avoid a decision. I mean, I mean, it's funny, going to a Finance Committee meeting and, and talking about various departments' budgetary needs, I guess I'm a geek, but it's fun. You know, and there's the times when you can do, you can, you can make the, the little changes that matter. So, I guess we, we upset the apple cart a little bit at our last meeting, because in the face of a deficit, we actually voted to increase the budget for the Human Services Department by $13,000, because they were saying, their, that department has gotten an increased role, where they're handling human service issues for seniors, but also for the general population. And they had a staff member who had 30 hours allowed, but they had 40 hours to work. They were willing to work the 40 and be paid for 30, but the state wouldn't allow them to do it. And we said, okay, yeah, we've got a deficit, and the last thing you want to do when you've got a deficit is raise, is spend a little bit more money. But the budget is 32 and change, million dollars, and if there, if there are people falling through the cracks for $13,000, well, goddammit, we're going to spend the money. You know, $98,000 to come up with, or 112, you know, so, and it felt like the right thing to do. Even though, if you told me going into that meeting I was going to vote to increase the deficit a tiny bit, I would have said, really? But, so, I don't know, it's fun.
Thank you. My other question, we were talking, some citizens had asked about our criteria, our criteria, criteria for our FinCom rep, and maybe that's something we can discuss after we've interviewed both candidates. But one of my, one of the criteria that I look at is not just how will you serve as a member of the, of the Finance Team, which it sounds like you've done pretty well, but also as, as a champion for the schools. And by championing the schools, I think that we see that the town is better off as well. But what experience do you have that helps you champion for the schools?
Because I grew up where everyone in my extended family was a professor. You know, I mean, a lot of kids, you know, when they rebel against their parents, there's like, well, I'm not going to go to college. Well, in my house, you know, in my home, growing up as a little, you know, trouble-making seven-year-old, the way I could treat my parents was, I'm not going to go to graduate school. And that was just heresy, that was, oh my god. So, you know, I've been, I've been surrounded with that, I have, you know, you know, a master's degree in cognitive psychology, actually dolphin psychology, which is just sort of a weird, weird thing. Go figure, I'll talk to you all later if you want to know about that, but just shows that I can take on an educational topic that isn't necessarily going to be for money. But in, in, in part, I mean, I work in, in technology field, where education is everything, and continuing education is everything. And if you're not, if you don't do continuing education, you don't get to work next year. And so, so it's interesting, I mean, as much, as much as I think STEM is wonderful, one of the things that I try to suggest to people who are still in, in the educational, you know, going, going through their educational train, is writing. Oh my god, writing. I mean, I, I hand memos back to people and say, you got to give me a verb. Every few paragraphs, you got to give me a verb, I'm sorry, you know?
Frank, can you describe your professional experience creating and implementing budgets for the company, department, or project you worked on? Can you describe the practices and tools you used when you were working on creating or implementing those budgets?
Sure. So, I've been, right now, I'm, like, like I said, I'm, I'm an employee at a financial services company, so I'm an employee, I'm not, you know, in that regard, not, not doing the budget. I did run a consulting firm, self-employed, for about 15, 15 years, and, you know, very successful. I mean, the, at, at the time, it was, it was Excel, you know, it was, it was all Excel, it was, you know, basically Excel and then Schedule C, you know, no one loved Schedule C. So, being for myself, self-employed, I mean, that wasn't, you know, I wasn't, you know, I haven't been a manager, you know, of a financial department.
I had a couple of other questions, but these guys covered it, so I'm not going to say.
Okay.
All right. Really just one question. If appointed, you look out 12 months, and looking back, what will have had to have, what will you have had to have done to make us feel as though we made the right decision
Okay, a couple of things. One of the things that we talk about on the FinCom...
What would you have had to have done to make us satisfied with the decision that we made tonight?
Okay, okay. I'd, I'd say, continue, continue doing what I've been, what I've been doing. I've been, I've been acting, I, I have to say it again, it may be hard for you guys to, to believe, but I'm your best friend on the FinCom. When issues come up with, with, with the schools, when they say there haven't been layoffs, I'm your guy. I'm the only guy saying, no, there, no, there really, there really were. You know, I, I think, I think we project, I mean, every, every year, it seems, the projection is, next year's going to be the really bad one, we dodged a bullet this year, next one's going to be a really bad one. So, that's, that's always tough to tell, but I think, I think, okay, I'll give you, I'll give you a concrete one. So, there's, you're in negotiation with the teachers this year for, for the next contract, and we can't talk, obviously can't talk about details, but there will be implications from that. There will be, there will be a new contract, there will be implications, there will be, there'll be gives and takes, you know, and changes. And that will have ripples on, on our budget, on your budget. And it's, it's, you know, have we faced those ripples? Have we anticipated? Have, have we rode with them as, as, as best we can? You know, I mean, I think that's, I mean, in our mind, I mean, that's, the, union negotiations tend to be the, you know, a big unknown, because at a certain level, we can't anticipate what's, what's going to be agreed to. And personnel costs tend to be the largest driving force in the budget. So, I think we assume, you know, that there will be implications, and have we handled them? I don't know that I personally can be on the hook for handling them, I will do my part. So, I guess it's, looking back, you know, did I do due diligence in, in, in supporting you and keeping the, the overall budget as smooth as it has been, as Moody's has said it's been? But, but I mean, that's a, that's a, I mean, that's a tough one. Yeah, yeah.
What do you see as the relationship between the FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, and then you individually, and the Board of Selectmen?
Well, I think, I think I'm, I think I'm not the only person who's had a conflict or two with this Board of Selectmen. I think, I think the, this, this last board, this last year has been, you know, has been You know, on the other hand, we have managed to agree on, on priorities. We actually, I mean, this has been year two or three of a process of trying to get priorities more clearly defined. I mean, a couple of years ago, we basically said, all departments, we want to know what your priorities are. And we had a whole big give and take about what's a priority. And we had, and, I mean, it's funny, because Selectmen guard quite properly, guard their role as executive, and they don't necessarily like being told what to do. And at the same time, what I think we on FinCom saw that we were doing was saying, you're the executive board, great, set the priorities. You guys set the priorities, and we'll try, and we'll try to implement them. I mean, we're, we're servants. You know, if, you know, if you set the priorities that we want to have more and better playing fields than Concord, well, you may disagree, but by gosh, we'll try to make that happen. But, but you guys, you guys set the priorities. And so, it's been a process of, of doing that, but it's, it is a give and take, because, I mean, we all try to leave our egos at the door, but here, on FinCom, we're trying to say, and quite honestly, we are trying door, but here on FinCom, we're trying to say, and quite honestly, we are trying to say, FinCom, we would like you to adjust how you approach the budget process to start from a prioritized basis. That's a tricky thing to do. You know, I think we, we've tried our hardest to do it respectfully and say, you're the executive board, you're in the best position to do this, we want to encourage you to do it. Can I say that they haven't, that they haven't ever perceived it as we're saying that they're doing it wrong? I don't know, but at a certain level, we have to have, you know, thick skins. I mean, it's, you know, I sort of joke that FinCom's easy, just say no. Can we have no? You know, so, you have, I mean, so, I, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm getting at your question, but, you know, because I think the underlying question is, you know, can I get along with the Selectmen? Say, I've tried.
No, that's not my question.
Okay, okay.
The question is, do you think it should be, the relationship?
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I think I sort of have answered that, in that they're, they're the executives. They, they, they are, they're the, the executives of the town. And at a certain level, I mean, Selectmen appoint, you know, 250 odd positions. As with you guys, they, they appoint two members of the FinCom. I mean, I think we're, our job is, is essentially to follow the direction they set. But as any good first officer does, you say, ooh, I think there's an iceberg up ahead, Captain, you might want to go left, you know? So, it's, it's advisors, but with hopefully some specialized insight. I mean, they're, I, I mean, quite honestly, I mean, I, I have fun with FinCom, but it's a hard job. You guys have a hard job too, but, oh, my god, I don't think I would ever want to be a Selectman. I mean, they have to handle all of the issues. All the issues that you guys do, all the issues that we do, all the issues that everybody does. So, you know, so I think it's, it's, we're their advisors.
You mentioned million-dollar savings. Is that annually?
That's, that's a reduction in the, in the cost of the capital borrowing for the middle school. So, that's, that's, that's a one-time, although, although it's interesting, it's a one-time two years ago when we did the refi, but since, since the amount now being, being paid off, you know, is decreasing faster, more, more of that money will become available into the operational budget sooner than it would have. Now, one of our policy rules is that, so, okay, so, so here's, here's the whole budget. And if we spend this much of the budget on, on capital to pay off, to pay off our debt, once that money has been allocated to capital, it can't go back to being used for operational costs, but it can be used for paying down capital, other capital projects sooner, and it can be used for doing new capital projects. So, it's sort of, it's sort of this whole trick of like, okay, if I, if I can pay down my debt, can I, can I free up some more money for operational costs? And unfortunately, not so much, but of course, it's, it's far more complex than that because then you have the undesignated fund balance, which used to be called free cash, that can be rolled into paying off some of the capital expenses. And if you've paid off other capital expenses sooner, then the undesignated fund balance can go further. I mean, we're, we're paying, we're doing a million, eight or so in capital projects. And, oh, okay, another thing we're trying, one of the, the things I actually even forgot to talk about is that, you know, I came here when, to hear the presentation that, that you guys heard from the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, and I really wish they would have an acronym that we could say faster, but on the cap, capital survey. And so, one of the things that's, that's been a little bit hit or miss every year is the set of capital projects that we do. And we've been trying to, we love the initiative that you guys did with Permanent Municipal Building Committee of doing the survey, and we've tried to push the notion that capital, all our capital requests go through that system, even though it still needs to be expanded and take care of other buildings, so that we can more systematize the approach to capital. And I'm not sure if that's in any way related to where your question, but I just got off on a tear.
Chloe?
Because budgeting's fun!
I think I do. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Steve Moore, live at 12 Robinwood Road in Littleton with my wife. We moved here about seven years ago. Public service has been in my family's history for decades, and we were very active in public life back in Pennsylvania where we came from. Got out of it for a while while we were in Chicago, and now that we've settled here, we're trying to get back into it. About a year ago, I got involved with PMBC, which has been fantastic with Rich Crowley. We headed up the facilities study, which seems to have taken off and been pretty popular with identifying the needs of capital projects in town. I'm a program manager for a fairly large project in town. I oversee all the budgets and negotiate with the contractors. I guess I've presented my credentials to the board, and I'm a little, hope not to disappoint, but I'm a little stingy with my language and my, my verbiage. So, I guess I'd just entertain questions from the board.
Alex? Why do you want to be the Finance Committee representative for the School Committee?
Well, I come from a family where my parents were schoolteachers, and education's important to me. I think it would be very worthwhile for myself and the township if I got involved. And I take a very measured approach, deliberate approach to looking at budgets and negotiating contracts with people. So, I think I'd bring a lot to FinCom and on behalf of the School Committee.
And leading in, leading into my next question there, how, what situates, what situates you to be in a good position to champion for the schools and by way of that, for the town?
I think my approach, I think it's in, in the approach. I would, and it would be in communication with the School Committee and understanding their needs and working on FinCom with the members of FinCom and communicating those needs to the FinCom Committee.
Thank you. And Brian spoke a little bit about what he thought was a good idea for us to judge who we should appoint to the FinCom based on the criteria. And I think we're going to have a discussion hopefully in a little bit. What would you consider to be some criteria for a good decision for the School Committee to make for its rep on the FinCom?
Well, that's, I think, kind of subjective. Some of it would be the approach of the individual toward the, the job at FinCom. As I understand it, FinCom supports policies, they don't make policies. And I think I heard something somewhat to the contrary here tonight. So, I would be supporting policies and making, in concert with the other members of FinCom, making recommendations as appropriate to town meeting.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask you the same questions that I asked Brian and recognize there'll be a slightly different perspective in terms of your answering them there, but I think they help me understand where you're at. So, could you discuss an initiative where you had the minority opinion, particularly in preference, related to the PMBC work that you've done or some other comparable type of activity, and how you led, led through that discussion with the other members of the committee or team that you were working with?
Well, in August, we brought our contractor on board. We have a, a new delivery method called CMGC. It's instead of CMRIS or, but anyway, we bring this contractor on board early, and in the early stages, he acts as the construction manager, and then in the construction stage, he acts as the contractor. So, it's a new legislation that came into effect in Massachusetts two years ago. And when he came on board, the MBTA wanted us to negotiate him in around five, five-and-a-half million dollars for his pre-construction services. I did my own estimate, and I came up with around 6.8. And the contractor came in at 7.5. We eventually settled around 7 million for his pre-construction services for 18 months. And it was above what my, my bosses wanted, and it was below what the contractor wanted, but it turned out that it's actually less than what we needed. So, we're in the process of putting together another amendment.
So, again, this one here is going to just strike towards familiarity with current issues within the town here as it relates to the budget. So, again, recently, the School Committee worked with the town on using our circuit-breaker funds to help close the, to lower the amount of the appropriation, to help the town balance the overall budget within $95,216 or $0.75 or whatever the number is there today. What's your opinion of, of this approach that was taken in terms of, of using the funds and trying to close the budget gaps?
I've got a very cursory understanding of it, but what I do have, I approve of that.
And then, and then finally, what types of recommendations do you see the FinCom putting forward regarding the long-term budget outlook of the town, particularly as we refer to the structural deficit?
I don't know that I can answer that with the knowledge that I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, can you describe your professional experience creating and implementing budgets for company department of projects you've worked on? Describe the practices and tools that you used when you've been creating and implementing those budgets.
One of them was, as I just said, with the CMGC. On a company-wide, I was a regional business unit manager for URS. I'd have to do an annual budget with the office manager. We'd use PowerPoint presentations, Excel. It was pretty much Excel-driven, and I had to do resource leveling and, and understand where the needs were, and it was, it was pretty much all resource-driven.
All right. Well, like Mike, and it's been talked about tonight, about the criteria. And each of you did submit applications and gave us qualifications or resumes, and we've got plenty of letters, but similar to Mike, I, I feel important to kind of keep both candidates on kind of the same playing field. So, I'll ask the same question I asked Mr. Thomas. If appointed, 12 months from now, looking back, what will have had to have happened? What will you have had to have done in order for us to feel as though we made the right decision in appointing you?
I, I will have had, had communication with you, understand your needs, and champion them.
Given that we already know Brian's experience, as we've known him much longer, you're with Gilbane now, major construction company. So, you're senior project executive, working $1.3 billion green line extension. How much of that is your responsibility? How do you handle that?
I'm responsible for the construction portion, which is probably going to be about seven and a half, 750 million dollars. The 1.3 billion is, includes all soft costs.
Now, having worked on that, I'm sure you can work on the town budget?
It'll be a challenge.
But a very serious question there, though, is how do you see, because certainly we're working on larger budgets, there's different margins. It is a state level, so certainly it's governmental also, just as is the town. But you work much closer to the people here versus working for the bosses there, if I can go with that broad generalization.
Yeah.
So, that takes me around to a question I asked previously as to, what do you see the relationship with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, and specifically you and the Board of Selectmen?
I see the Board of Selectmen is setting policies. I would be charged with following those policies and making recommendations in conjunction with the FinCom team as appropriate.
Chloe?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So, Alex, you've mentioned criteria six or seven times. Sure, so tell us what yours is.
So, the criteria that I would consider important for us to consider tonight is, will they act in the best interest of the town and what enables them to do so? Will they be a champion for the schools and what enables them to do so? Do they know the material and the, not just the material in terms of the budget and its processes, but also its history? And can they work as a team, both with the, with the finance team and with the schools and the rest of the town?
May I just want to speak to that?
I think I had that, you know, I think that having direct experience with budgeting, finance, management, you know, understanding, you know, how, when you're going through a budget process, being able to level resources versus, you know, what you want to do versus what you're going to be able to do. And then, obviously, this is sort of a public accounting framework in terms of you, unlike in a company where you're oftentimes in control of the revenue and the spending, really here we're only controlled spending to a large degree. Obviously, we have our tax base, but we have a significant amount of our financing comes from, you know, parties that we're not directly accountable for or directly influential of. So, but again, that ability to work with numbers and be comfortable using them and understanding, having experience, direct experience with that is a big thing for me. I think we all agree that, you know, the willingness to work for the town, to volunteer their time, to be an advocate for the schools and the town overall, I think pretty much anybody who's going to get involved, that's, that's definitely going to be a criteria. And I'd be shocked if anybody couldn't meet that criteria. I have yet to encounter anybody, even people I disagree with at times in our roles and other boards, that doesn't meet those criteria. Otherwise, they'd be in a bowling league or golf league or something else besides participating in local governance.
I guess I have a slightly different perspective. I know, and I've participated in other activities where there's usually, it's sometimes nice to have crisp-defined criteria, some score, one to five, you add up all the scores, and the one with the highest score, you know, wins. But also, you know, I've been a manager for 25-plus years, and we go through interview processes, I bring candidates in, I evaluate each one on the merits of what they're bringing to, you know, the questions and answers, and then I balance those across the team, you know, the, the team of folks that I have discussing with them. And often, people have, have different interpretations of what they hear, they have different interpretations of the value. And actually, to me, in my role as a hiring manager, all of those different perspectives are very key in terms of trying to identify the candidate. So, I don't go on the, the specific thing here. I do agree that, you know, as we talk about the pieces there, we should, I guess I'm, you know, in terms of my own list here, articulate what, what was the deciding factors, plus or minus with each candidate, but they're, and from my perspective, they're taken in context of the, of the candidate, and they're sort of independent of all the others, and it's a composite of that. I'm more of a favor, I guess, of making sure that we're, have the discussion, have the articulation of what we see, the pros and cons of each candidate there, so that those are out on the table for everybody. So, I have a slightly different perspective on criteria there, but that's where I'm coming from in terms of process.
The only thing I'd add, since some criteria have been tossed about, is one of the things that I think is, is very important is communication back to us. And the word collaboration has been thrown around a bit tonight as well. Mr. Simone mentioned that, that it's important that the candidate be collaborative and communicative. And I, communication is extremely important.
And I, communication is extremely important to us and I think that that should be considered as one of the criteria.
When I see another one, what do you think? What's important in your mind that a candidate that's representing, that school committee's going to appoint to the FinCom in our town?
I think it's important, the thing about the candidate's interpersonal style, especially because our town is so small that like a lot of our personal stuff can kind of get in the way of how a board is functioning, you know? And so I think it's important to look at how a candidate would interact with other people and how that is like revealing of what their priorities are maybe, my thought.
Thank you. Perspective. I'd have to second, pretty much with everybody's said here, those are the same things that concern me. You know, having dealt with, you know, multi-billion dollar budgets, you say, well, it must be easy, you know, and come in and then you can deal with a smaller budget. And that's not necessarily the case. You sort of hit on a little bit, private company, maybe the revenue and the spending. You're controlling both your profit and loss center. That's not quite our function here. And certainly, as a school committee, we're not a taxing authority that falls to the selectmen to set rates and the like within the law of the Commonwealth. So it's a slightly different problem for them to deal with. But that's where FinCom becomes a tie between the various boards and committees that do appoint the FinCom members and then the Board of Selectmen themselves. In addition, obviously, the correspondence and the court communications, excuse me, that the particular boards and committees have with the selectmen, but also the FinCom brings wisdom, if you will, in addition to, you know, the givens of a little bit of financial management acumen and the ability to handle budgets. So the technical part, I think, has to be a given. And now the judgment, which comes in, is how do you think the individual may be able to steal and win friends and influence people, to put it in the vernacular such as that? Because it is a role of influence. While certainly there is, priorities are set by the boards, transmitted up to the Board of Selectmen and for working with the rest of the people in town, FinCom needs to be able to articulate well why they take a particular position, so that if they feel it is the right thing and a reasoned and well-thought-out argument is what carries the day, so that it's persuasive and compelling when the rational person hears it and goes, ah, that makes sense to me. And that's what I've been looking for in a person, who has that ability. Because again, the financial acumen has to be a given going into it, because it's a raw number game, you have to be able to do the math, it's as simple as that. But it's beyond that also as a body and how do you influence the body and then the body influence the selectmen. And frankly, the people too. We talked about that certainly in these last, what, eight, nine years or so, whatever it's been, certainly Article Four has moved along somewhat swimmingly. You know, we've had a couple of times, maybe a hole in a particular item, but it's been for clarification and then quickly clarified, resolved and moved on. So, but there may well be times, and certainly as we're looking at FY16, where we're looking at a bit of a more square corner, the circuit breaker funds was brought up and how we have to expend those in a given fiscal year versus moving on. And a person's ability to understand that, ability as a person to bring forward and then articulate to people also, because it's not just a case of I'm meeting floor, you're in the community. You meet people, whether it's a McDonald's, whether it's a church, whether it's a social club, or it may be, you have to be able to speak to them and convince them also. So that's the criteria that I'm looking for in a person also. Anybody want to add anything? No, sir?
I'm going to make a motion. And before I make it, I just want to make sure that we all understand that as I make this motion, I don't want anybody to think that this is a refutation or repudiation of either candidate. I think really what we're going to end up doing here is making a relative determination between two highly qualified candidates. I think both of them showed in the material that we've seen and what they presented tonight that we're really making a very relative choice here. But the motion I'm going to make is that we nominate Steve Moore to be our school committee appointee to finance committee.
Motion made. Is there a second?
One second.
Motion made, seconded for the discussion?
Yes, I think we should have much further discussion, I think. When I look at the two candidates, I know both of them fairly well. Brian and I served together on the Board of Participation and Study Committee and Steve and I served together on the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. And I've seen both of them contribute a lot to those committees. I also think both of these candidates are hoping to help the town, that's why they're here. I think both of these candidates are familiar with finance and budget. It's in both of their backgrounds, both in terms of volunteer service, in terms of professionalism. And I think, you know, in terms of what you're looking for on a FinCom, on those degrees, I think we have some good candidates here. What I think for me is the tiebreaker is their perspective on the schools, their influence in the schools and their influence on the finance team. Brian Tarbox is the vice chair of the finance committee. That's something that takes quite a while, I think, to get up there in terms of the senior members of the finance team, and I think that certainly has helped us. I've also seen that Brian has been very vocal in his support for the schools during finance team meetings, particularly as Brian had said, during the, after the FY13 budget cuts, there is a lot of denial, I think, from other members of the finance team and I think, you know, we know that those cuts were made, but it did need to be communicated. And I think Brian, one example of Brian's being in a minority and then bringing the team around would be on that issue as well. So when I, when I look at these two candidates, I think both of them, you know, are public servants. I think both of them have served the town in the past and I hope both of them will continue to do so. When we look at the capacities in which they serve the town, I think that Brian Tarbox is much better fit the needs of the school committee and the needs of the town on the finance committee.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, let me just talk about my impression of both candidates, because, you know, the process that I was talking about. So in looking at both candidates here, I was both impressed by both of them in certain areas, a little disappointed in a couple of areas also from both candidates. And I thought I would just summarize my notes here. So in the case of budget execution, I think both candidates are highly qualified. They've, you know, through their capacities, either through the current work in the FinCom or through the business associations that Steve works there, I don't have any doubt that both are familiar with the technical execution and planning of a budget there. I was a little disappointed, I think, in terms of, actually from both candidates, on the active recommendations that they would be making in terms of how the town is moving forward, because I think that's going to be one of the key functions that FinCom is going to be doing as, as an advisory role to the policymakers there. I'm very, you know, very obviously impressed with Brian's familiarity with the current state of the town budget, the state of the current issues associated with it. Quite frankly, I was a little disappointed. I recognize Steve would have a different set of insights from him, but I'm not sure that he's as current on the talking points of the issues. Like I said, I recognize they have a different perspective of it, but it was a little disappointing there. And that's, but I go with my next one there, and particularly in related relation to the question Chuck asked both candidates on what was, what would be the successful appointment there. I really wasn't very impressed with Brian's answer. It was, it didn't provide any actionable response to the piece there. So, you know, he's been our appointee for, you know, for the last several years. I'm deeply disappointed that this is the meeting, I'm finding out that the FinCom was challenging our staffing assignments and this is where I'm finding out about it, at this briefing here. So I did like Steve's answer, which, you know, provided a little bit more specific feedback in terms of what he would be taking as action steps back to this committee and not just leaving us to find out from the information there. So I see pluses and minuses in both candidates for the, for the position here tonight. And, you know, quite frankly, I'm still quite torn on the, on the, on exactly how I'm going to vote, but I do, I just wanted to sort of summarize what I saw of the pros and cons of both candidates and where I was a little disappointed in both candidates there also.
In terms of the way I'm going to go about making my decision here, when I looked at the material that we had provided to us by the candidates, the criteria I have are, obviously because the finance committee appointment is a direct experience with budgeting and finance, and then the second biggest criteria would be advocating for the schools. But to be honest, on the FinCom, I really don't expect our appointees to be in there solely advocating on our behalf, nor do I expect any of the other appointees from different boards to be, you know, strictly representing theirs. I think there really needs to be a subjugation of, to a degree, of which board appointed you, because the FinCom has overall responsibility for the warrant against the entire budget. And we've talked in the past about how we really aren't comfortable when it's referred to as the town budget and the school budget, because that's not how it's voted and it shouldn't be thought about like that. And I know it's convenient to think about it that way a lot of times, but at the end of the day, it has to be understood that it's the budget. There's only one budget. It's the town's budget, okay, that we're a part of and other departments are part of. And I expect that, you know, I would like to know, and I fully expect both candidates will be in there representing on behalf of the school committee, because I would expect that anybody who gets involved from the school committee point of view is going to be doing that. But really what I'm asking for is more of a, rather than getting in there and just bantering for more money, is just making sure that any decisions that are made are weighed in direct, directly on how much the impact would be on the school department, as well as decisions that we make on our budget, how it impacts the other one. So I think they can both do that. What I, so what I weigh more is the budgeting and finance experience, because I find, through my own professional experience, being fairly extensive in that regard, is that the ability to model, the ability to keep multiple points of view in different, to different departments, the requirements, the sources of funding, the way they're going to get spent, it can be a very complex process, especially when you're dealing with multiple people on boards, both the board you're on and in this case, the boards that you're supporting. And my concern is, is that I feel like the representative that I want for any of the appointing boards is someone who can really knows how to navigate those waters. And in my mind, Steve clearly has a significant professional advantage over Brian in that regard. So given that they're both going to be able to advocate or willing to advocate or willing to be involved in local governance, and that's kind of a wash to me, then I'm going to go with the guy that has more budgeting experience, because I think that's a specific role that we're appointing.
When I think about...
Hold on a second, please.
Sure.
I go back to the fact, Mike summarized, we've had this information from the candidates, had time to review it, we've taken a look at, I think everybody knows what the FinCom does. We took that into consideration, I took that into consideration. I asked one question, the same question to both candidates. I wasn't throwing softballs to one candidate or another. And I think there were a lot of similarities and a lot of similarities and a lot of, there was parity, I guess, between the candidates in a lot of areas. I would parry what Mike has to say about the professional qualifications and frankly, I was looking for the answer to my question to be, something to do with either collaboration or communication, because I think that's critical in working with us. And I also echo what Daryl had to say about hearing about the, Brian having our back and us not knowing about it. So based on the interview here tonight and Steve's answer to my question and all the qualifications, I would say that he is the more qualified candidate.
Alex? When we look at, in terms of the experience, which I think is where the discussion is heading, in terms of the experience that each of these candidates offers, I think that while Steve certainly has a lot of experience from a budgetary standpoint, from a professional history, which Brian has as well, both as working as a sole consultant and also working in financial software, I think when we look at, when it comes down to, when we look at who we want on the FinCom and their experience, one of the candidates has almost five years' experience working with the finance team, working with members of FinCom and making sure that it's done in a collaborative way. And I guess the question I have is, one candidate is already tried and true, he's the incumbent. What sets him apart is he's actually done the job, he's done it for four and a half years, he's done it for four and a half years, and I'd like to see him continue to do that job.
My comment is that is, I'm not going to make a, I'm not going to sit here and do a character assassination of either of the candidates, but just because somebody works for a certain type of organization, somebody works in Hollywood doesn't mean they're a good actor. Somebody works for MGM Studios doesn't mean they're a good actor. Someone works for a financial software company doesn't mean they're good at finance. I'm not saying that Brian's not, but I mean, to, I think on a resume, the financial qualifications are heavily weighted towards Steve's experience. So if you're going to put experience against experience, I'd say that, you know, the facts...
I think, Mike, thank you. When I think about the job that candidates are doing now, Brian has done a job for four and a half years. And while the two have two different backgrounds in terms of professionalism, they both work with finance, they both work with budgets. And while those roles might be different, I think when we look at that experience, they're pretty similar. Not similar in terms of the perspective, but similar in terms of the professional background and the quality that it brings to the FinCom. But when, but one thing that's been talked about a lot tonight is the collaboration piece, and I think that we've seen Brian collaborate very well with other members of the FinCom. And I think it's certainly his point about turnover and about how that certainly will help the schools certainly carries a lot of weight, certainly does with me. I know that I feel much more comfortable with Brian in there when other FinCom members might be disbelieving of the pain that our district went through in FY13. I feel much more comfortable with Brian in there saying, yes, these cuts actually happened. There was a negative impact and we weren't able to actualize all of our goals because of what happened in FY13. I feel much more comfortable having that be part of the conversation. Now, I don't think either candidate would be solely the voice for the schools. I don't think that's what any of us want here. And so I think both of them will, would meet the criteria and walk that line pretty well in terms of making sure they're advocating for the schools with a town-wide deal and a town-wide solution.
The only comment I'd like to make is, in terms of the experience level, there's a big difference, having been both a consultant and employee of a company, and while as an employee of the company, working on budgets and providing information to the decision makers, there's a big difference between being a consultant and fashioning your own budget for your enterprise versus working collaboratively with a large organization and being able to be a part of the overall process for, you know, a multi-million or billion-dollar company. It's two different things. And while Brian does have the four and a half years, you know, on the FinCom, weighing that against Steve's, you know, 20-something years of experience doing this type of thing in a very complex environment, I think gives him a big head on that level in terms of what Brian has done. And again, I'll reiterate, and you just said it, Alex, I think they'll both be, I don't really see a significant difference between their ability and their willingness to advocate on behalf of the school committee, the schools and the town. So again, I'm just going to come back to that, what I consider a very large margin of difference between their experience in terms of handling budgets and doing forecasting and things like that.
Steve, can I respond to this? Thanks. When we look at the experience piece and the professional background, I think that's important. And I think we focus a lot on Steve's professional backgrounds, and I'm not sure how many years Brian had, Brian spent in financial background. Certainly, I think both candidates have strong professional backgrounds and Brian's only qualification is not that he's been on the FinCom. I think each candidate has a number of qualifications. But when we look at experience, we want to make sure, I think the reason we're talking about experience is we want to make sure they can do the job. Brian's been doing the job for four and a half years. He's going on five town budgets now that he's worked on, five fiscal years, doing the job that we're asking, that we're trying to find someone who knows how to do. He's known how to do it for five years, four and a half years. So my question is, is there something wrong with his service from the past four and a half years that would make us say, we don't think he knows how to do it? half years that would make us say, we don't think he knows how to do this?
See, that brings me to the point I made right when I made the motion. It's not a refutation of Brian when I say that I think Steve is a better candidate. I think it's a, it's a comparative, and it, you know, it's on the margins. But at the end of the day, I mean, you look at 20-plus years of experience versus five years of experience, there's just no other way to get around it. Brian's experience as a software engineer isn't as directly applicable to the role as it is for someone like, for Steve, who's done, pretty much that's been what he's doing, budgeting and maintaining budgets, implementing budgets. I mean, that's his background.
I hear you, and I do hear where you're coming from. My concern is, when we're looking at the experience that's most applicable to filling the role, one of the candidates has done the role. That's as most applicable as I think it can be.
Because I think we all found the same each other's points here at this point.
Okay.
Give them all an opportunity. I'm gonna take my opportunity, if I may. One of the things I hit when we were talking about what our expectations are, the criteria that we would look at this, you know, my point was, the math is the given. We expect them to be able to do that. Experience certainly is a plus in just about any engagement that we're gonna have. So I certainly weigh that heavily. But I think you heard me also talk about communications between the various boards, between the board selectmen, and certainly between the committee itself. I do have to echo what Daryl mentioned. I'm dismayed, and I've spoken with FinCom members many, many times over the years, since FY13, and we know FY13 was a very raucous event for us, because we did indeed cut a position. That was very clear we cut positions. We had numerous people come to school committee meetings advocating that a particular position not be cut, whether it was in the music department, whether it was some social sciences department, wherever it might have been. We had some very vociferous discussions on that for arguments from people, supporting that we don't make those cuts. So certainly, in my mind, it was clear we made cuts. And that if some folks did not realize that, that we had made cuts, and that some folks actually denied it, frankly, it's a bit of a hit on the integrity of this particular committee, because every committee member here said, we took FTE cuts, full-time equivalent cuts. Our superintendent said, we took cuts. We said it in public meetings, we said it in private conversations, wherever it may be. And not one FinCom member ever came to me personally, and I'm gonna speak about me personally, to say, I don't believe you made those cuts, or I doubt you made those cuts, or pick any shade of gray you may wanna say that would entone, we don't think you made the cuts. And that gets the communication bit. And that may well have contributed to some of the friction we had over the last couple of years. Certainly things worked out smoothly in the end game, but if we had people doting our word on that, and it would have been simple, here's the spreadsheet, here's the payroll records, and you can see that the number of people we had in FY12, we didn't have in FY13. That was a very simple math exercise, folks. And I can only add that I'm dismayed that that communication process did not take place. And I'll stop there. Okay, we've all had our piece. Motion's been made, motion's been seconded. I'll ask for a vote, and I'll be asking a's, and I'll be asking a's. So, great, gents? Okay. All those favor the motion to appoint Steve Moore as the school committee representative to the FinCom, to the Town of Littleton, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna poll. Daryl, and poll the board.
I-
Just a yea or nay, please.
I voted nay.
Yea.
Yea.
Nay.
Yea. Carries three, too. Brian, I wanna thank you for the service. I hope you take it in the light as to the way you might describe it. We thought that today, this is the better way to go forward for the town and for the schools. But I do wanna thank you for your service. Thank you. And Steve, you'll need to report to the town clerk at your meeting convenience, please. Take the oath. And-
For clarity, I believe my term expires at the end of town.
That's where we're gonna get to. So that, and I would appreciate a collaboration between Brian and Steve going forward, and so that we can help each other there. We can do that, please. Thank you, folks. Okay, now we'll press on with the rest of the meeting. You wanna take five? Okay, we'll take five minutes. How about, we'll stop back up at ten, I mean, on the hour, how's that, on the hour?
Yeah.
Chloe, do you need to go home?
Because if we do, I'll just have you, we'll come back.
I just need to tell you, gentlemen, that I think that was very disappointing. I think you should be ashamed of yourself.
Welcome back, folks. We're gonna continue on. Acknowledgements. Do you want to attend it?
Sure, a few. I had the pleasure of attaining, or pleasure of going to High School Play last weekend. Much Ado About Nothing. Must say, a very well-thought-out performance. The students were great. They were natural, within their character, very confident. And it was a pleasure, just a pleasure to watch. And they had a great turnout, three opportunities to go see the play. Really proud of our drama program. The second acknowledgement is, I know spring sports are underway, and our weather hasn't really been cooperating with us, and I'd just like to acknowledge our Parks Department. They're doing what they can to get our fields ready. It's pretty difficult to line a field when it starts pouring on you, and it just doesn't last very long. And we have a lot of fields to take care of. So we appreciate everybody's patience and forecast for the next seven days of sun, so hopefully those fields will dry out, and we can start using them to their full potential. And the third acknowledgement is, our staff and students were certainly ready for a break, and everybody's looking forward to having some time to spend time with family. And I can't overemphasize that importance. When I look at my own career during a number of years, when I see families from when I first started teaching to where I am now, one thing that seems to be a common denomination is the lack of time that families seem to have together to share stories, whether it be at a kitchen table or on a camping trip. And I'm just encouraging everybody to spend some time together and have some quality family time.
Chuck, I share my story in the car. How about you?
Car?
Yeah, between events, absolutely.
Nobody's camping? Come on.
I gotta start tweeting.
There you go.
The high school play was excellent. Wonderful way to spend Sunday afternoon.
Well, Friday night, Saturday afternoon.
It's for proud dad.
That's right.
It was great. So we see well-rounded kids. We had this science project tonight, high school play, we had the band, we had chorus. Athletics are doing well, well-rounded. Kelly, I'm gonna ask Chloe to give her report right now.
Sure.
Yeah, so for events that are coming up at Russell Street, the orientation for incoming third graders will be May 8th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And then for the science fair, the regional winners were seventh graders Lena Barbieri and Christina Stilis?
Yep.
Yeah, oh, yes, okay. For their project Heartburn Help. And then in eighth grade, Adam Canfield, Jacob Montepulso, and Sean Finnerty did their project Cabbage Clones. And also eighth grader Abby Hartzell, her project Temperature, Acid Levels, and Fermentation. And all three of them, all three of those projects got third place, which is awesome, because this is the statewide competition, I believe. Yeah, and then, so next week is vacation, but the week after that, at the high school, Nicole Patterson, she's going to do her senior project on drunk driving, which is huge. They're having, I think, speakers come, they're having a crashed car towed to in front of the high school. So that's gonna be really impressive, and that's exciting. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
When I was at Nishoba, they had a similar type of thing, but they had a, not just the mock-up of the car, but they had some kind of sloped thing that would simulate a crash that they had the kids ride in. Not a ride, but I mean, to actually experience a five, you know, what a five mile an hour crash was there. I think it was sponsored, I think they ended up interfacing through, like, the state police or somebody. I don't remember how they did it, but that was another interesting piece that got a lot of positive feedback from the students, because several of them had never been in an accident. And it just sort of reinforced the drinking, the driving, and the force of what actually even a small speed crash is.
And we're actually gonna have a real simulation, including a mid-flight helicopter landing on the field. And so, you know, it's more than just a scenario that only has fixed variables. What they're doing is they're replicating what would actually happen in that particular situation. So I, you know, again, I commend everybody for going to that extent, because it will bring further meaning to the message that they're trying to get across. And just a comment, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna follow up. The national program is every 15 minutes, and there's a script associated with it. And Nicole is trying to follow that script as much as possible. But first, police responders, then firefighters will come in, they'll be cutting off the tops of vehicles, boarding people, ambulances. MedFlight is also mentioned. There will also be videoing of the process as well. So it's a fairly extensive involvement of the town's resources.
Very much so.
All right. Just to go back just for a second, having our middle school students here this evening presenting their science fairs, you look at that age group, and you look at what they were able to do this evening. You know, it's, to me, not only intriguing, but it's a very proud moment. To have students that age come to a school committee meeting and speak to a number of adults, and realize that they're televised, to, you know, carry out their present- to, you know, carry out their presentations in such a sequential manner, very articulate, very competent and well poised, it's a real credit to our educational program within our school district. As we all know, those skills just don't happen. And if you ask people what one of their biggest fears are, every second person will tell you it's public speaking. And when I looked at them this evening, I was just so proud of the way they handled their presentations. And of course, the research that they did for their presentations. It was thorough, it was interesting, and it was something that they spent a lot of time thinking about. So I just wanted to mention that. We're very fortunate to have the support that we do in this community. Again, education is not just about what happens in our schools, it's about our community supporting education as well.
Home business?
Yes, last school committee meeting, we had a little bit of confusion about what percentages meant when we were taking a look at the number of students in the 2007 graduating class, 2008 graduating class, attaining some sort of degree status. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, and I'm really not a fan of extrapolation or interpolation. I think that is a real disservice to the data that one's looking at. But in essence, if we go to the 2007 data, which is enclosed in your package, those students have been out for six years. As of June 2013, they'll be approaching seven years in June. The literature that I've circulated to you in the past few years, specific to postgraduate studies from high school, indicate that a number of our students take, nationally take between five and six years to obtain a bachelor's degree. So when we look at the 2007 cohort, that really kind of gives us an impression of what's happening in a period of time that's back nationally with statistics in terms of people attaining degrees, whether it's a two-year degree or a four-year degree. And if you look at that year, we're, we had 84 students. And 69 students attended some type of post-secondary colleges. And the percentages are in reference to the 69 students. So this data goes up to the end of 2013, which is a complete university term, or year more correctly. So in that scenario, in 2007, we had 81.2% of our students that started post-high school education attain some sort of degree, whether it was an associate's degree or a four-year degree. We all know there are a number of variables that are responsible for that success. We would like to think that we play a part in it, and I truly believe we do. But there are also many, many other variables that are at stake when students leave our four walls and engage in what the real world has to bring. But I feel that we're on the right track in providing our students with those skills. Resilience or perseverance, whatever word you want to use, I think that's a key component or characteristic that our students need to have as they find their niche global market. So that's the data for that year. And if we go on to 2008, that would give them five years of data to take a look at. If I can move my screen. Kelly?
Yes. Let me, so, just looking at the 81.2 number that you referenced, which was selected high school graduates who obtained their first degree.
Right.
So that means 56 of our students.
Fifty-six point six.
Fifty, well, no, 56.
Fifty-six.
Students obtained degrees. Of the 69, that's what the 81% is. It's not 81% of the 84 graduates we had. But I think that was what one of the confusions last week was, was what number were we basing the percents off?
I really try not to confuse people this evening.
Well, no, that's why I wanted to make sure I followed it correctly.
Right.
There, so, okay. Thank you.
Yes. So the next data deals with the 2008 graduates. Our numbers varied a bit in terms of total population, but they were both small classes. We had 91 graduates in 2008, 63 carried on to some type of post-secondary education. And at the end of a five-year period, 71.4% got a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree. What I found interesting too, and again, I want to be cautious because I'm not a fan of extrapolation or interpolation, but in both years that we've taken a look at here, even though our populations were much lower in terms of students who attended out-of-state colleges and universities, we had a higher percentage finishing a degree or an associate's degree. And I realize that 1% is much larger and a smaller number, but it was interesting for two years in a row that statistic helped. So we're going to be watching that as we forge ahead using this data as one of many indicators that we use to determine how well we're doing as a school district, not just a high school, but as a school district. Questions on that? Did that bring the clarity that seemed to be lacking last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2014-2015 school calendar. And just to review a bit of the process in terms of how we create a calendar, we have a calendar subcommittee that is composed of members of the administrative team and members of the Littleton Educators Association. And with those discussions, we take a look at professional development time, we take a look at holidays, et cetera, and conference days. And conference days occur at the end of a trimester or a semester, and they need to be strategically placed within the calendar to ensure that our parents and our students have good information to use before they come to a conference. Dr. Branko, in the second conference set, uses student-led conferences in grades seven and eight, I believe. And that also sets a different type of standard in terms of when those conferences can be held because it's a whole different way of doing business. Great learning experience, I think, for both parents and students. Very different for parents, first time that they're immersed in that kind of situation. But when you've analyzed effective conferencing with students and parents for as long as I have, you need to realize that that engagement with the student present is very important. So I'm convinced we're headed in the right direction in that area. But if we go back to the calendar now, this calendar, I would be asking for an approval this evening, pending LEA contract ratification. Because one of the components of this contract deals with a full-day professional development day in November. Or, sorry, yes, November 4th. I had two there. So we had spent some time at the committee level talking about this. And there are a number of things that we want to do with a full day. As a systemic professional development approach, it's certainly advantageous for us to get together as an entire district and look at strategic initiatives that affect all staff. We also want to expand and go beyond that, given the opportunity, and start teaming up with other districts within the region. And we've had a number of discussions with 14 different districts, and depending on the players, there seems to be a lot of movement this year with curriculum coordinator positions and even superintendent positions. So we're hoping that momentum continues, but we had planned not for this next year, but the year after, to bring at least 11 to 12 of those districts together for a PD day. What we would be doing is sharing the expertise of our staffs in that setting. So we would be tapping staff on the shoulder for various presentations that were curriculum-related. So they would actually be receiving top-quality professional development from their peers. Spill-off effects obviously would be the development of relationships expanded beyond our school district so that they can work hopefully on joint projects together with technology. They can Skype each other or FaceTime each other, or use Google Plus, use Google Docs to share projects. So there's an untapped resource that is a district I'd like to see us pursue. And this is one way of doing that. We've already talked about the need for our teachers to go out and visit other schools. I think in the last four years, we've managed to take advantage of that, and we've had certainly positive results of doing that. The administrators are always asked to take a look at schools that are doing things better than they are, something they want to strive for, and identify those schools and go out and meet with the administrators or do a day of observation. So we're really expanding our perception of what professional development is in our district. So that's the reason for that one day. Now, it does extend the number of teacher days to 182 because we have to have 180 student days. So that's all adjusted on the calendar. The only other thing I would like to point out is during the April interviews, this year we were able to cluster two out of the three interviews in March and April. What I mean by clustering is that we had a common interview time for K through eight. Unfortunately, next year with MCAT's administration, the middle school had to pull out of that partnership. And as a result, they had to have separate interview days, as you can see on the calendar. Now, in terms of total professional development days, it's really school-specific. K to five, we have 12 professional development days, six conference half-days. So those are all half-days, so we have 18 half-days. The middle school, we would have 17 half-days. They all have 12 professional development half-days though. And the high school would have 14 half-days within the calendar. We've tried to ensure as much as we could that we didn't have more than two early dismissals during each month. That's a little harder to do when you have three conference days put in to each semester, so to speak. So one in the fall and one in the spring. But I think we did a real good job of trying to balance that. And we had Wednesday in terms of professional development days as a consistent day. Questions about the calendar?
Daryl?
No, I, in a separate email to the superintendent, I looked at a couple other just printed formats of the calendar, just as some alternate suggestions for consideration, nothing, you know, deemed is there. But I think there's one sensitivity that's been brought to my attention and I, you know, is the various religions in town and their holy days, and making sure that we have the sensitivity towards, both in the calendar, and I think I sent one correction to you and you already took care of it there on it. I saw in a couple of the towns, they have like, they've gone to like a two-page format that includes some, a little bit of additional administrative information, such as noting when the various pieces are. I think several of them echo elements out of their policies relative to homework and other pieces on those days, and slightly different formats on annotating all this other information that's in here of all these early release days and which ones are which schools there. I just provide that as something for consideration of the administration. You know, as you look at different ways, we want to be effective in our communications with folks.
The other thing, you bring us a good point, Daryl, to keep in mind is, I think the format that we used here was trying to jam it all into one page that's going to get tacked up on the refrigerator or the bulletin board at home, which is necessary, and I'm not saying we should get away from that. But at the same time, I know this gets put up, like if you go to the calendar, this is what you look at. I would argue that the one online doesn't have to be a direct replication of this, that we could do, the online one could be much more, longer, clearer, have more detail on it, and even more content conceivably, like you said. You know, this is half-days, days off, everything else is implied. You know, maybe we could use another method, online, it is not as implied, it's much more explicit.
They went with a two-page format, front, back. The front's got a relatively concise thing here, and then the back side has the rest of the detail on it. Just, again, something to think about.
And again, I just think that this is the thing we get trapped in, well, we've always done it this way. And it's not that there's anything inherently wrong with it, but there might be a better way to do it, given the different, you know, resources.
I'm chuckling because everybody has their preference in terms of what a calendar should look like. When I first arrived here, I had my preference as well. And when I dropped my calendar on the table, it was really kind of funny to watch their reaction because they've been doing this since the beginning of time.
Maybe the new board is more open to different suggestions.
We need to take a look at it, it's like anything else. You give it some time. But one of the funniest things, it's funny and serious at the same time that I've had to deal with since I've been involved in some regionalizations in my career, is coming up with a universal key for school year calendars. I mean, I was involved in regionalizing 14 regional school districts into one. Imagine conversations we had about a universal calendar. And my recent one was three districts into one, and we all had different calendars with different codes. And you really do get into interesting discussions. I do agree, Daryl, from day one, I thought this one was a little convoluted and could be done geometrically, using different figures and make it much clearer. Plus, I like color. I would like to go color in it as well.
Could we use maple leaves?
I was about to say, I was about to say we could start running it on the Canadian.
Red and white.
Calendar year.
That would be scary because it's about 198 right now for most provinces. I wouldn't buy that, but I think it might be a negotiation issue.
Perhaps. Any questions, Alex?
Yeah, I had sent you an email asking about the half-days. And I do appreciate that there is so much that goes into scheduling where they fall. And I also know that a lot of the conversations that we've been having and we've been hearing from the town have taken place as the calendar subcommittee was working on, working on the calendar. So while I'm a little frustrated that I can, that this change, that these changes we are talking about making can take some time to implement, I'm hopeful that we can do it, if not this calendar, this coming calendar year, then perhaps in the one following, vis-à-vis where half-days fall, whether they're Wednesdays or Fridays, and whether they're, you know, first and third of the month. I understand there are a lot of complex challenges for that. So I do appreciate that the admin council is taking a look at that. And while I'm a little frustrated that we can't see action on that, on that this coming school year, you know, I do realize that these things do take time. So I'm just grateful that that's sort of part of the discussion.
We, just for clarification, Alex, we did manage to keep to Wednesdays for professional development days. It was a conference days that, it would have extended them out too far if we would have done that.
I was referring more towards the, whether we could have any consistency in terms of which Wednesdays or how many per month. And I do understand that there are some complications to that with the trimesters, with the standardized testing.
We had the same cutoff point for reporting periods, it would be much easier. But something we're continuing to work on.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, some instances like January, we have a half-day or three-hour early release on the 7th. We go back, we go back on the 5th and we have a half-day on Wednesday. That kind of on the back of what Alex is talking about with the review of the placement of half-days or early release days. I get it, not only from my wife, but from a lot of, a lot of parents. We just got them out of the house and you send them back home again.
We certainly take that into consideration. Part of what we do though is, when we have professional development initiatives, there needs to be a duration of time that we need to adhere to to make the professional development effective. And sometimes that drives when we have those half-days. So it's a matter of trying to balance those two needs.
Based on the resources that we're bringing in?
Well, a number of things, sometimes that. Sometimes it's just time working on projects, et cetera.
And sometimes, you know, we had a conversation about, you know, the validity of shifting those days so that one winds up falling in June, so if you went second and fourth, second and fourth, second and fourth, it's difficult to have meaningful PD with 10 days of school left. There's not a lot of, if you've been in professional trainings yourself, the applied after work is the most important part of the PD session. And, you know, we're closing up shop, we're getting through final exams in mid-years, and we've got a lot of end-of-year business, and so to do a meaningful PD and then not be able to give them authentic application of that is almost foolish. So we deliberately made the decision to not do a PD session in that month. And I do think that's, Chuck, that might bump some of those dates up a little bit on us.
Yeah, I just, I.
We don't disagree with you, like, it's a painstaking meeting every year. And as a parent of a middle schooler and an elementary school for the first time in two different schools, I get it now. Trust me, I get it. So.
The other thing is, we've kind of bounced around the idea of the amount of learning that goes on the day of prom, the amount of bodies in the building. And just looking at May, there's no, no early release days on that Friday of prom. I don't even know what date prom is next year. But I think Dr. Harrington actually mentioned it at one of our meetings, that he'd like to see that professional development day, we've got the 6th and the 27th shifted.
We've had that conversation a number of times. We've had that conversation a number of times, and we know what's going to happen on prom day. It affects one class out of 13 grades, more correctly. Teachers can gauge and develop their courses accordingly. I'm not sure if that should be a driving force for a PD day. The driving force should be the PDs, so I hear what you're saying.
It's not just one class, it's a high school, and there's a number of freshmen that are going to prom, there's a lot of sophomores going to prom.
Well, that's true.
So it's junior, senior prom, so it's two classes minimum, and then there's a lot of, I've got a sophomore that's going. He's homely, too, so I can't withstand it.
You're banking on him not watching Miss Far, right?
Pretty much.
So there's certainly, like everything else, two sides, and we actually did change it one year, and received some criticism. When you ever make a change, you receive criticism anyway. And then they changed the day of the prom in the end, so-
Yeah, that was last year, right?
Yeah, so again, I hear you, but when you do that and then the day of prom changes, it kind of defeats the purpose, and we have the parents that like the consistency of the day, and on and on and on. So you're trying to, to do the best you can with a situation that is really going to take care of the primary reason why we do it, that's for professional development for staff.
Yes, we stayed up, it had to come to me, so I'm-
I appreciate that.
Any constituents?
You gave a rather lengthy description, Kelly, of all the rationale behind it. Do we have anything like that written down?
We don't, but we certainly could. And, you know, piggybacking that, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'm going to be requesting from my administrators and curriculum directors is that we give a description in terms of what's happening on our PD days, PD days, and make it visible and-
Yes, I'd like to go forward and thank gents on this. First off, we already know it's somewhat contingent upon a negotiation issue that we're working with the LEA. This includes the day right now, though?
Yes, it does.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, we'll take a vote on this, contingent on our final discussions with the LEA and the agreement we come to, and a one-page summary, whatever it may be, that described, that you gave us tonight, to be attached to this, so that it goes out as a calendar along with that. Are you guys okay with that?
Just that it wasn't just unarbitrarily, it was a thoughtful consideration, it was painstaking hours.
So contingent based on those two issues. Excuse me?
Are you looking for a process page or a description of the calendar?
Because I've heard, I've heard two different things tonight, just to make sure.
All right, no, it's the process, we know how you do your process, and if you want to give, you know, a couple, three sentences, this is how you gave, there's some brain bites to it, I'm okay with that, too, but specifically, why is the half-day the half-day? Why do you have them on some of these days the way you did? Chuck asked the question of, just come back from school, two days in, and there's a half-day. You just describe eloquently why we don't have one in June. Let's have those sorts of descriptors attached to this.
Why don't we do it for prom, same with March, because, yes, okay.
I mean, you're not going to get every possible permutation. Hit the key ones, you know, the ones that you've heard most often, the parents, the other staff, the students themselves, and see if we can come up with that half dozen, 10, whatever it might be, items that helps give this description, so folks don't just see it, as Mike said, okay, it's good to have on the refrigerator, get school today, you have a half-day today, or, you know, or whatever it might be that parents are using it for, to help their planning process. But at least give them a little bit of rationale as to behind it. Okay?
And someone, was it Daryl or Chuck who just pointed out that it might be valuable to explain a little bit what professional development is going on? Did I hear that from?
Yeah, that's, I thought I said that, but if not-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Then that, please.
Okay.
And that will be an ongoing thing.
Well, we won't-
Right.
We'll know that for this kind of document, though.
No, no, that's two separate things. The other thing is, a running documentation of professional development that's accessible.
Yeah, that we do do, yeah.
Not as part of the calendar, it's two separate things.
Okay. So anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2014-2015 calendar.
Contingent upon negotiation with the LEA.
Contingent upon negotiation with the LEA.
And the attachment sheet, please.
Just a second.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
We are, are you okay with that?
All right.
Okay, so motion made and seconded now. Motion's made and seconded, that we approve this calendar contingent upon LEA negotiations, and an attachment sheet that's a bit more descriptive, and we'll be the judge of that as to when Kelly presents it to us at the next meeting, and then we'll press on from there. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carries unanimously.
There was nothing in that motion about color, though, huh? Unfortunately.
I can sneak that in.
Yeah.
I guess, Paul, the one thing, you know, we started the discussion with the public hearing on inputs on the calendar there, you know, just in terms of how we want to plan on wrapping that process up, so that if we do want to, you know, it was too late to influence this calendar, and you said at the beginning we were going to probably stay with the clean air, but we ought to probably target closing those discussions, so that if we do make a change or have specific recommendations to the administration on what we would like to see, they have time to more sufficiently plan that into their planning process.
Yes.
That's a good point.
Because we can't wait till May and then, next May, and then say, yeah, we want to change the calendar, and these guys come across the table at us.
Make more interesting.
Getting ready to rumble.
You'll see that on the next agenda.
Okay, yes.
Someone come across the table?
I won't miss that one.
Tell mass survey.
Thank you. The TELMA survey is described a little bit in the packet, so I won't go too far into that. Essentially, what it is, is it's a combination, a number of different constituencies came together, the MASC, DESC, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, a number of different organizations came together and recognized that there's a lot of important feedback that can be gathered from teachers and from administrators that is sometimes easier to get through an anonymous survey. So what the TELMA survey is, is it's a survey utilized, it's a survey created by the New Teacher Center, which is an organization based out of North Carolina that runs a number of similar surveys across the country. And for about six weeks, there's a period of time where any teacher in Massachusetts and any administrator can, or rather, any building administrator can log in and take the survey. And the goal is, if you can hit at least 50% of your possible survey takers taking the survey, then the information becomes available at the school level, which allows you to have a much better understanding of how things work in terms of school improvement, climate and culture, resources teachers need, and so on. So I, I know that Kelly, I had spoken with Kelly about this survey either just before or just when the window opened in January of this year, and Kelly was very supportive of trying to make sure that we were able to get those numbers. Unfortunately, we did not, you can take a look here, the high school came just shy of hitting that number where we can access that data at the local level. Otherwise, we can't, we can't use the data whatsoever, which is a shame. We can analyze the state data, but that's, really doesn't say a whole lot about our own district. So what I'm hopeful we can do is figure out what the, what the impact was that made it such that we had so few participants. I think it might have been, I don't know if teachers didn't know, or if there's a time, it takes about 30 minutes to take. Why didn't, why didn't we get the results we wanted in terms of the participation? And then moving off of that, how can we get the information that the survey would have given us without waiting until the next edition, which is 2016? I did call the New Teacher Center and ask them, you know, if there's any way to replicate the survey, and I spoke with the assistant director who runs the TELMA survey, and she said it would be, it would be likely that we'd be able to use essentially the same survey free of charge, and they would set us up and help us administer it. Now, this was a very, you know, this was a 30,000 feet up conversation, but it seems like that would be something we'd be able to do. I don't think, I know that Kelly sees the value in the TELMA survey, and I think we all sort of see the, see the value in being able to understand how our employees feel about the resources they have in the building, the time they are spending in the building, the time they're spending outside of the school building, a wider range of questions that gives us important insight into how we're running the district and what our staff need. So what I'm, what I'm hoping we can do is, I'm hoping we can salvage this, this opportunity and get more information using the, using the New Teacher Center to figure out more about what's going on.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting when we look at survey data, and when I looked at this survey, certainly it's a well-designed survey, it gives us some, some very good data. And a couple of things you have to remember is, first of all, it's voluntary, and if teachers, you know, choose to fill it out, that's up to them. Secondly, there's so many factors involved in whether people fill out surveys or not. Nationally, the average survey return rate is about 10%. You can't do a lot with a 10% return rate. Surveys are losing their validity in the global market in terms of, I'm going to say market research again. And it's frustrating because surveys are one of the most efficient ways of gaining information very quickly, if you want to find some information out about an organization or about an event. Part of, I think, what's happened here, and it's been a long history of this, we're a smaller district, we have communication channels built in where people feel comfortable coming to see, whether it be central office administration or school-based administration. When the LEA meets and has their executive meetings, if there are any issues that they want to discuss, they know that they can come and see me and we'll have a good, open discussion about those issues. And if teachers have concerns, they feel comfortable coming to see me or somebody else that, an area that they may be in charge of. So I think we have a good line of communication, a good communication map and process. I think you also have to remember that our SIPs are aligned to a lot of these, a lot of the items that are indicative of the composition of this survey. Our strategic plan also piggybacks that concept, so we have a lot of checks and balances in place. Again, I, you know, I love data, and sometimes you can get certain things from data that's anonymous that you can't when you're in the room with people. But all we can do is encourage, I guess I, another thing I need to add here is, if educator evaluation is fully actualized, the Mastel survey is going to lose its reason for existence somewhat, because they're going to go to localized surveys, and they may take part of the survey when they create the localized surveys. So it would be part of the administration that would occur on a yearly basis in terms of input from staff. And that wouldn't be used directly in the administrative evaluation, but it would be something that would be discussed during the evaluative process. And to be quite frank, that's what I'm used to doing as a superintendent. I would administer surveys every year to teachers, school-specific and district-specific, and then we would take a look at that data. We also give them time to do it in those scenarios to maximize our participation rates, if something one could consider. And as a superintendent, I certainly wasn't going to go down that road when it is voluntary at that point in time, but if it was a district survey, I would take a different approach. So it's just some, some conversation in that area, but it is a well-designed tool.
And what else?
Sure. I just remember reading the NEASK piece, there was a survey in that that I had asked you about, you know, so I think there is some useful data that can come out of the surveys, but I'm actually surprised that the high school had such a high participation rate after just completing all of the other surveys and the other pieces that they were done to there. You know, so I, I think it would be, you know, in terms of making sure that what we survey is something that, you know, we're going to be getting the value out of, you know, and whether, I don't know whether it's this survey, the one that was in the NEASK one, which was a different teacher sentiment survey. I just don't want to see us surveying everything. I think we need a plan on how we want to survey so that we can maximize both the efficiency of how we're using the staff time, because it's a valuable time, because I think, you know, you'd probably end up wanting to have it as part of one of your PD days, so it's a mandated, sorry about the term there, you know, exercise that they're going to do versus a hit or miss of somebody's taking time at night to go in and do another half-hours worth of, you know, schoolwork there. So I want to make sure that what we want out of it, we've got a survey that we're going to administer effectively for it.
And our, our teachers are extremely busy this year with the initiatives that they have, and it's been a real challenge trying to create a balance between everything. But, you know, having said that, when I look at participation rates in other centers, they're just as busy as we are, and their rates were higher, so I want to be cautious when I say that.
You know, based on what I read and what Alex presented, I think it is an interesting tool, this particular survey. I do worry about over-surveying, and I worry about making it mandated, because then they're going to answer the answer, not necessarily because they want to answer, they really have validity of the answers, they're just going to fill the thing out. I know I've done it, I'll admit that I'm guilty of that, but I'm usually doing it to marketers who I really care about. But all I would say is, I think that, I appreciate the fact that Alex brought it forward and that Kelly's evaluating. If Kelly and his admin team makes a determination that this is the particular tool they want to use, plus or minus the tweaking that they can do with the, with the provider, that's up to them. I'll leave it to them to make a determination on that. I'm not going to hold them specific to this one. I feel like they'll make a good determination on this tool versus another tool versus not doing it at all if they really think that's the right answer. It doesn't sound like that's what they think, but I'm just going to leave it to them.
When, when we look at their participation rates, and I think Chuck or Daryl made a good point, it's surprising how the high school had the highest response when they just went through NEASK. The high school's rate of about 48% is identical to the state average, and about the same with comparable districts in terms of, through DART analysis. What's concerning is that some of the, is that the data, when we don't hit that 50% mark, that's information that not only our administrators can't see that, and they can sort of sometimes discern some of those, that those data pieces conversationally, but we're all, we aren't able to see that either. And so I think it's a helpful tool for us to use if we were able to have this data in front of us. Now, it, it does offer a lot of important information, such as whether teachers feel they have enough time working with colleagues, or if they feel they spend too much time on student discipline, or any, any number of questions, whether they have the, they feel they have the support of the community or parents, and how well they feel they can communicate with the community and parents. A number of different things that I think hit back to our Vision 2020 district strategic plan. And when we, when we're having our conversation about indicators of success, which we have had several times over the past couple of months, when I look at what an indicator of success would be, when it comes to climate and culture and how our, our teachers and our administrators feel about our schools, it's anecdotal, and we can, we can do that to some extent because we're a small district, and I feel comfortable that if I ask Mark or I ask Mitch a question, do you feel you have enough, you know, support in terms of technology?
Let me explain it on this a little bit, because you've given us a tutorial on surveys, and actually, we understand surveys. I've participated in many of them, written many of them, so this is not new to us, it's not new and wonderful information. In fact, I would offer the Mastel that 50% return rate before they share any data is way too high a return rate. As Kelly just mentioned, you know, 10% is the national average on surveys. And we're able to get the national mood when they go out, sorry, 589 people, because it's a very targeted survey, very intelligent people have put a great statistical analysis into it, so they're able to determine things with all percentages. You mentioned it's only 30 minutes long for a teacher to take, and you suggested that we go ahead and now take it back in and do it ourselves. What's the manpower required to collate it, administer it, distribute it, analyze it, synthesize it, go through the whole process, and make it meaningful information? I don't know the answer right now. I know it's a lot of work, and right now, it's not work that I'm willing to task our administrators to do at this time. That a teacher chose and made a decision not to participate in this particular time is not some first amendment, it may well be that this is what they wanted to do. You see it as a panacea, I personally don't. It is one more data point to be used, there's no doubt about it, but we have numerous data points. So to say it's only 30 minutes, when all we're hearing from educators now is, you're killing us with time, with the PARC implementation coming along, and it's not too much of a pilot anymore because the commissioner's made it an implementation. Go on the PARC website and see his own words, so we know where that's going. And we see teacher evaluations, that's a new and wonderful thing. We see the Common Core. Alex, people are busy. Now, we may have another school district that had more than this, super, but you said it's the average. Now, I didn't look and see what the mean is, or excuse me, the median, but it's the mean and the average, so half to more, half to less, and where it falls in the median, I don't know, so maybe a whole bunch of districts did- So, maybe a whole bunch of districts did just a little bit more, and a couple did much less, so that we get the average, what it is. The thing is, I don't know how much longer we go. We got your point, so you've made, you've articulated it well, but now, you've got to kind of move on here. And I don't know, you've heard a sense from anybody right now, it's, let's go out and give the teachers another 30 minutes worth of work, and some of our administrators an untold amount, because that homework has not been done before we make that suggestion. Now, if you want to go and do that study, and find out how much time is required, and then bring it to us, and then we can use it as consideration, whether we task our administrators to do it or not, please feel free to do that.
What, I don't believe I've articulated myself well, because it doesn't sound like...
You haven't convinced us.
No.
That's the difference.
That's not, you're reiterating things that I don't feel that I've, that wasn't my message. So, I don't feel that I've communicated my message effectively. Not that I haven't convinced you. What my concern is, is that when we see, across Massachusetts, we see so many different initiatives, so many state mandates coming down, and so, all teachers across Massachusetts are pressed for time. When we see that our, as a district, our rate is, our response rate was 27%, and the response rate for the entire state was 48%, that concerns me.
Give us a solution, Alex. Give us the solution.
My, my, my solution is that we first engage with our teachers and figure out why they didn't take the survey. Did they not know? Did they not see the value in the survey? Did they not have enough time? That's important for us to know.
Do you want to run a survey to ask them why they didn't take the survey?
They would give it...
We've given plenty of time. Plenty of time, and they would give it... I mean, we can answer the question.
Kelly, explain that to you.
That'd be valuable.
I mean, if the chair wants us to answer the question, we can answer the question.
Didn't have the superintendent explain this to you, Alex?
I did.
Which part? Say that again.
The pre-work that was going into this, what the administrators did, the principals did, and how they communicated with the teachers. Are you unaware of what happens?
No, I'm aware that they sent out information, which is why I'm, I'm concerned as to why we didn't get the response, but I think Mark is about to answer my question.
Well, I just, I don't want to step in, I want to...
One second, please.
People that want to take the survey, that's why they...
And I'm wondering why. Because if they feel that the, the answers to the survey wouldn't have any impact on their working environment, that's a concern. If they felt that they...
How much you like to go about learning how, why they didn't take it?
Let's talk to some teachers.
Okay, please do that.
Okay, I will.
All right. So, do that, please. And then, if you think the suggestion is that we task the administrators to take this from the organization, and be able to use that survey, re-administer it to the entire population, and then collect all the data and analyze it, I'd ask you to do the homework that's associated with that, and how much time it will take them, please.
All right.
All right. So, let's go and put this round with the next meeting. Do you have enough for you to do all this?
I can certainly talk to the teachers by then, and figure out why there was lower participation than what we were hoping for.
Now, are you going to talk to 50% of the teachers before you share the data?
No, I'm going to talk anecdotally. Because that's all...
Next week's vacation.
That's right.
Excuse me?
Next week's vacation.
Thank you. So, next meeting's probably too soon, eh?
Let me see, when's our next meeting?
May...
Should be a...
It's the next meeting, town meeting. Oh, town meeting before?
Well, I won't pour a town meeting at this, for sure.
That's okay. I didn't anticipate you would.
Yeah. I can come back May, and I'll work with Kelly in the interim to figure out what the, what the cost...
And if you work with Kelly, be considerate of his time, because he actually is busy.
Yes, I know.
Okay, good. All right, we'll see, let's do it for this, because we usually don't do the, the agenda until the Thursday before. So, play it by ear between now and that Thursday, and then let me know where you're at, okay?
Sure.
And see if we put it on. Okay. Updated F5 budget presentation. It's on the website. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, just wanted you to know that it was changed and on the website.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's some evaluation for the superintendent. Kelly?
Yeah, just quickly, it's coming around that time of year. We have a new instrument this year, for the first time. We've had a routine that we've used for a number of years, and it's worked well. And I just want to make sure that, I took this opportunity to talk to you as a group to decide what would be helpful to you in terms of what kind of information do you need prior to filling out the evaluative form? Would you like a presentation? Would you like me to take a look at the 10 indicators and do a very brief summation? Some I really can't talk about that much, because they're confidential in terms of communication and problem solving, conflict solving. But I wanted to put it to you as a school committee, because I want it to be valuable to you. So, if you'd like me to do a summary and do a presentation that's an hour long, I could do that, or... I'd like to think that the way we operate as a school committee, you really do understand what I do every day, and, and what our goals and mission is. But at the same time, you may want to hear that as a, as a package, which is fine, that's great. Gives me an opportunity to talk about the district and leadership in the district. So, I'm, I'm looking for some guidance, so to speak.
Mike?
So, are we talking about using this to replace the typical superintendent evaluation instrument that we've used in the past? My first reaction to what you just said is that I would rather use it, do it, and then, you know, we would do what we typically do, which is have Darryl collate all of it, and we really appreciate that effort, Darryl. And, and present it, along with, you would do yours, too, and then we'd see where we come together, and where we have divergences, and, you know, that, I think that would make it a worthwhile exercise, but, you know, that's kind of how I see it. We got to be, we got to do it, too.
Yeah. So, what I was thinking would be, might be useful, is prior, if we could get sort of your narrative on, against the, the 10 indicators that we're doing here, I need to probably get together with you, so that we could pull the evaluation sheet with the rubrics that we're scoring, you know, scoring it against, because we need to get something out to the commit, right?
Right.
Back out to the committee.
I'll take it.
So, I think having your narrative, that sheet, our pre-fill out of that, and then a presentation and discussion with the superintendent about the point, so that if we need to refund, you know, based on the narrative, then based on his discussion of, and our discussion of the accomplishments against that, we may or may not adjust our specific evaluation against the rubrics. And then, I, and then, I think I would always compiling the final after that initial discussion there. Just working through the process in real time there, but I think that meets the intent of what the, the new model is also bringing us towards.
Correct.
Here.
Yeah, you're right, you bring up a good point. It is right, the model is two-way, two-way street.
Right.
The model is definitely two-way street. It's a little different, something...
Because last time, we would do our final score and then discuss it, and I think I'd like to modify it a little bit, that we have a preliminary scoring, the discussion, and then finalize it.
Okay.
Alex?
Yep.
All right. I don't know that we answered one of your questions, is whether or not you do some kind of presentation to us? Did we answer that?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that I would do a, a brief narrative, and then, if you had further questions, we would have a discussion in the school committee.